Seeing the presence of a quorum, we're going to call the order of this meeting of the Amherst Pelham Regional School Committee. As a note, this meeting is being recorded for future broadcast in Amherst Media and availability online. The first item in business, we have some fun and important business to get to in a second, but before we do, the first order of business is approving the minutes of June 26th and August 15th, 2018. And if the committees had opportunity to look at those minutes, do you have any corrections? Yes? Is it on this?
Just two minor corrections. So, one, under the first June 26th minutes, I had a number one, I actually came in just a few minutes after the executive session had been called. And so, number two, it's a little second information for approval.
Okay.
But I just want to make sure that it somehow reflects that I came in a little bit late.
Okay.
And then, the, well, this is not there yet. We have a script to make.
You can bring it up.
Okay. So, my name is listed as Anastasia Morton. There's been a lot of confusion around that.
Anastasia.
Well, go figure. Are there other edits? I'll take a motion, I guess we'll do it sequentially. I'll take a motion to approve the meeting minutes of June 26th, 2018.
Salute.
Is there a second?
A second.
Move in a second, a little quizzical.
I'm just noticing the absence of microphone.
Yeah, right. No, exactly. There's an absence of microphones and we're being recorded by that little camera over there, sorry. No, it's just me having to speak up. Good point. Do I have a second on the minutes?
I did, Kara.
You did? Okay, thanks. I got distracted, I apologize. Okay, any further discussion on the meeting minutes of June 25th? Seeing none, all those in favor approving the minutes as amended, raise your hand. It carries unanimously. Now, on to August 15th, 2018. Do you have a motion to approve those minutes?
Salute.
They're moved, is there a second?
Second.
They're moved and second. Any comments or notes on this, other than Morton versus O'Donnellis? Seeing none, all those in favor approving those minutes as amended, raise your hand, signifying eye. Carries unanimously again. Cool, now onto the fun stuff. You know, in my history in the town of Amherst, in my opinion, one of the best civic and academic programs I know of is A Better Chance. I actually lived up the street for a while, not that anyone cares, by the way, but I did live up the street on North Prospect Street for a while from the ABC House. And so, for that reason, both through school activities and walking home, just hanging out with the kids who were there, I had a chance to get to know that program well as through a number of ABC walks and just thought it's one of, it seemed, in my mind, it's something that had been around forever and been an extraordinarily valuable program for our community and for our schools, but as it turns out, it hasn't been around forever. And we're celebrating this year, the 50th anniversary of this program being part of our community and then, of course, that means generations of students being part of our community and contributing to the richness of our academic and social environment. So, it's a wonderful thing and we thought it was a great moment to take the time to acknowledge, celebrate, appreciate, and recommit ourselves to that relationship as a school district and as a school community. So, I just should say, normally, our ritual is we talk about things in one meeting and then we vote about it another meeting. And with the permission of the committee, we would love it if we could both talk about it and vote about it and celebrate it in one meeting. And if there's disagreement of that, like everything, we work democratically, you don't want that idea, then you'll have to come back in October. But with your discretion, I would like now to turn this over to the superintendent, who will then further, I think, have a discussion by Principal Jackson, as well as also the president of the ABC Board, Ms. Kohler.
Yes, I just want to thank Ms. Kohler and others who informed me about this being the 50th anniversary. And one of the neat things I was able to do was, we're fortunate to have the Jones Library and they have the special collections. And I called someone I knew at Special Collections and I said, you know, I'd really love to know more about the history. I've done the ABC Walk, I've been connected to the program, but I wasn't frankly alive when it started. I'm not of that age yet. And so, I went to Special Collections and found a tremendous, I mean, within half an hour, she said, oh, come on up, I've got a treasure trove, got to put on the special gloves to take the pictures, because they were original pictures from the late 1960s and early 1970s. I want to thank Debbie Osmore for putting together this slideshow. We picked some of the, some highlights from the scholars from years past. But one of the most interesting things, too, was reading, I think it was the old Amherst Record before there was the Amherst Bulletin, articles about some of the debate and discussion in the town when they were, they were talking about the ABC House and the program getting started, was that, I believe, the third public school program that was started. And so, much of the discussion was on the impact on the students and what I hear and experience in the district is the benefits of the students bringing to the school. And I think that's an important shift for people to recognize, that 1968, the focus was, was not really on the benefits of school. And when we have this conversation right now, that's the focus of what the students bring and how they enrich the experience of our high school and our schooling experience for all students. So, we really thank all of you who are students and those of you who continue to work and make the program vibrant. I mean, some good conversations about how to stay connected and maybe enhance the connections, not just for the scholars, but actually for the program and some of the ABC Walk and enhance our connections at a district level to the great work that's happening. And I really thank everybody for being here tonight and coming to this celebration. I could go on and on about old Amherst Record articles and pictures, but I'll turn it to Mark Jackson, the high school principal, who's going to share a couple of things and then introduce Ms. Kohler.
Should I still come up here or can I say?
Please come up here, because then the camera can get.
So, actually, my role is a fairly limited one. What happens is that Wendy and Sidney and Isabel, they recruit students from around Eastham Seaford and they bring them to, for a weekend to the high school. And I always have a meeting with them. And so, parents, guardians are in the room, along with the, along with the students. And my really focus is on the family, because this is a big decision for the family to bring their, send their child off away at the tender age of 13 or 14. And so, I got myself into a rhythm where I say that when people came to see me 15 years ago, I knew nothing about ABC and I was just kind of reading off the cheat sheet on the table, right? I didn't have any firsthand experience as a basis to sell the program to these legitimately skeptical or suspicious parents. But today, I'm in a position to tell a very different story, right? And I look the parents in their eye and I say, the best thing I can say to you is that I had firsthand experience, 15 years worth of experience, that the program works. And what I mean by that, just about everybody, and I think there's probably been over two exceptions over the years, just about everybody who comes in, goes to class, gets involved in activities, enriches the school, and at the back end, they walk away with an Amherst Regional High School diploma and they get on to a four-year college and the rest of their lives. I've watched it, I've seen it, with kids from all up and down Eastham, from all manner of backgrounds, the program works. And that's my contribution, right? This is, this is an unadulterated good. This is something that's made a material difference in the local lives of schools, most importantly, in the lives of the kids at home. So, I'm very happy that we're here tonight acknowledging one of the signature features of working town is the college. Thanks.
Ms. Kohler.
Mr. Jackson.
If you can step up, just so you can capture it on the camera, I hate to say, so you're not a disembodied voice.
So, thank you very much. Before I just make a few remarks, I want to recognize some of the people of the ABC community who've joined us tonight. First and foremost, Sid and Isabel Ferreira are resident directors. We have current and former board members present, well, at least, back here, Keith Nesbitt, who's actually president-elect, Meg Hart, treasurer, Kirsten Hallibur, who's very important, our walk-run coordinator. And I know there are other supporters in the room, but I would like each of our scholars to take a moment, if it's okay with the committee, to introduce themselves, starting with you, Pierre.
How are you? I'm Pierre Tullis, I'm a junior. I grew up in Bridgeport, Connecticut.
Just got off the football field.
Good evening. My name is Martin Zinell. I am also from Bridgeport, Connecticut, and yeah.
Sophomore.
I'm a sophomore, too.
Hi, my name is Daniel Molina. I'm a sophomore and I'm from Newark, New Jersey. ABC. Really enjoy ABC. I enjoy the opportunities and the community.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Azamir. I'm a freshman. I'm from, and I'm from KIWI.
My name is Shawn Jacobs. I'm a junior, I'm from Paris, New Jersey.
Okay, thank you, guys. These young men, our scholars, obviously represent themselves, the program, and the proud tradition of the program and the scholars that you see on the screen. Of course, you know, this is a community commitment and, but, and that takes the full community, but at the core of it is the partnership with the regional schools and particularly the high school. I want to particularly acknowledge Mark and Mary, and Mary Custard, Liz. Everybody who's part of the staff here has given so much for so long and continues to promise to do so. And without that, we wouldn't have a program. Without the support of the regional school committee, there would be no Amherst A Better Chance. So, as we celebrate this year, we are planning, besides the walk-run, Pitch Pitch, you can pick up information about that in back, and the gala at the end of the, of the year. There's going to be a community gospel choir concert again that brings music of the community and different generations and, you know, people and groups from the community together. We want to acknowledge the partnership that has been so important with Amherst College for all these years, providing tutorials, support. But I would say, first and foremost, we want to acknowledge the partnership with the schools. And we have some thoughts about how to do that, but we really want the school committee to know, in particular, how much we value and appreciate and understand, not only the financial support, which is obviously extraordinary, but, and the academic and the extracurricular support and the leadership and the love and guidance, but that this is truly a partnership. Mark is always very good at pointing out, as Mike just said tonight, too, that we, we get as much as we give, if not more. I certainly can speak for that personally. I know all the adults here who've had the experience of working with these young men feel the same way. And thanks to you, we can look to the next 50 years. And I think I could just end by saying, we certainly know that this crossing communities, bringing people together, learning from each other and sharing, is the future of our country, the better chance we all deserve. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, sorry, I guess we should read this thing?
Yeah.
Probably read it.
I have a copy.
Do you want to read it?
Sure. A resolution in support of the Amherst Regional High School and Amherst A Better Chance Partnership. Whereas the Amherst Pelham Regional School Committee voted on January 8th, 1968, to approve a partnership between Amherst Regional High School and the newly proposed Amherst A Better Chance Program. Whereas the first eight A Better Chance Scholars enrolled at Amherst Regional High School in 1968-1969 school year. Whereas more than 120 A Better Chance Scholars have graduated from Amherst Regional High School in the ensuing 50 years. Whereas these scholars are highly valued members of the Amherst Regional High School student body, who have enriched the Amherst Regional High School and the broader communities through their numerous contributions. Therefore, be it resolved that the Amherst Pelham Regional School Committee reaffirms the continuing commitment to and partnership with Amherst A Better Chance.
Is there a motion to approve the proclamation? Moved?
We have to approve the resolution as read by Ms. Cassie.
Is it O'Donnellis? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dunlop. Is there further discussion on the item? He'd be even saying he disagrees with it and are excited about it.
I agree with it and I'm excited about it. It's a wonderful thing. How many opportunities do we have just to affirm this, like, outpouring of love and support? It's fantastic.
Is it on this?
Well, I just want to give a special shout-out to the young man from Newark, New Jersey, where I spent my teenage years as well. It's just great to have, you know, a fellow Norker here. And Newark, not Newark, right? So, yes, I just wanted to say, thank you so much for this program. It's fantastic to learn more about it and to have the opportunity to support yet another 50 years.
Some question, which may have an obvious answer. Is it an all-mens program?
There are, there are women's programs as well. And actually, about, soon after this program was established, one was established in South Hadley for, for young women. A lot of the community-based programs struggle financially. Actually, we all do, because we get no support from ABC National. So, it is actually the funding that comes from this community that keeps this program going. So, we're happy to say that we're thriving, but we, we know of others that haven't. And six to eight young men is probably where we should stop. The program would have its own, you know, that's where else we're at.
Well, I hope you keep in prize, as well as engage the committee on any future celebrations you're doing over the course of the year. I think, I'm sure the committee would love to participate. I'm not from Newark, but I actually have a native New Jersey in myself, in New Jersey. Some sort of New Jersey Amherst connection, which is very positive.
We will give you each your very own save-the-date cards for the gala.
I think, I mean, that'd be wonderful. I mean, also, and I don't know if you're going to get alumni up, but with Judy Brooks' service, there were, there were ABC alumni up, including some people from my generation.
They're very much looking forward to coming back.
Wonderful. Absolutely wonderful. Any further comments?
I'll just, I'll just say thank you to the program, because I was a student here as well and I have fond memories of the students that were here on the ABC.
If I could just say, I'm glad that you and Eric broke, broke that up. And we hear over and over, you know, talk about the alums from the program coming back to celebrate, but many, you know, wedding announcements with Usher's name, who, you know, and baseball, fancy baseball teams that have, were established when, young men who are in the eighth grade and they give their money to ABC when they earn it. So, you know, there's just so many ways that lives have intersected and have been touched and made better. So, girls, too.
Just very briefly, it's going to scroll through if it's on that, but just because you mentioned Judy Brooks, one of the favorite pictures I found, and people may or may not have seen it, it's just Judy and Barry and Barry Jr. many years ago, as being so directly connected and supportive and kind of the heart of the program and its inception. I just want to publicly acknowledge that and Ms. Brooks' passing. As we, I don't want to put a sad note on this, but it means a celebratory.
It's not even, I mean, in terms of her legacy, it's not even sad. I mean, I remember, it was her and Barry that got me involved in the ABC walks first. And you don't, I mean, not that I would have, but you don't say no. I mean, it's like, she inspires you and she lifts you up, right? It's a wonderful legacy. Anything further? All the, because also, we got to sign this and then we need to let them on their way, because it's actually, there's, we, each, each of us gets to sign this thing. Anything further? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand, signifying eye. It carries unanimously. Pass these down.
I'll have a couple of copies.
Do you, do you need a pen? Can we use that pen?
Yeah.
Thank you. Find your, there's, they're duplicates, so just sign each your own.
And it's study hour time, so.
Oh, is it?
I'll wait for the, and I'd like to thank everybody.
Thank you for coming, by the way. Sadly, we need to move on. It's the nature of the business. Announcements and public comment. Are there any announcements?
Two brief announcements. So, one, right across the hallway, there's a presentation on fueling and vaping and practical information that parents and caregivers can learn. Hope it's relatively new, public health issue with our students. And on a related note, slightly longer comment, on the topic of high potency, easily concealable drugs, I went to a community outreach meeting last night for one of the recreational marijuana shops being proposed for Amherst. There's about a half a dozen of these. This is, this one was particularly interesting to me, because it's right in the heart of downtown. It's a 37-39 boltwood walk, which is, you know, Bank Center, Bueno, Parkmont area. And it was, so this is the mandatory community outreach meeting. I bring it up because we've spoken about this committee before. It was very sparsely attended, other than myself, select board members, and town employees, there were maybe two or three members of the public. So, the operator seemed nice. I shared my concern, my generalized concern, which was, and we've heard this spoken before from some of our administrators, which is, you know, does the town want to welcome and promote easy access to this kind of a product, which, which is high potency, easily concealable, in the same area, same locations where the town welcomes and encourages children to congregate? And from our perspective, we're talking about middle school and high school students going downtown, being independent. This is one of the reasons why there's zoning bylaws. And if you look at the zoning map of downtown, it's almost completely covered, because the Jones creates a buffer zone, the churches create a buffer zone, and there's this little squatch that is just out of the reach of the buffer zone. And that's where this location is. So, I was offering the point of view that it's kind of not in the spirit of those laws. So, in terms of process, the committee wanted to take this up as an agenda item to discuss to whatever end. That's the sort of main possibility of public input was yesterday. From this point, the town goes back, does some further analysis, makes a recommendation to the town manager. The town manager then will either approve or not. And at that point, it's relatively finished unless there's a zoning board of appeals outlay. So, the opportunity for the committee, I think, is to, if we wanted to provide input, would be to provide it to the town manager and go from there. So, it's a good dressed-up, a good, a future agenda.
Okay. We can't debate it, so we're not going to discuss this. That's a, a long announcement.
Yes.
Any further announcements for the committee? Yes, Ms. O'Donnellis.
Just a quick one. I actually attended the Collaborative for Educational Services meeting last night, which was a great meeting. There's a few new members from some of our other districts. And they've recently updated their course offerings. And I think the superintendent's probably been aware of that. But for the, the school committee members, if you'd like to see more, you can either come to me or you can actually go to their website, also the collaborative.org. That provides a lot of information. There's things there, you know, professional development courses, there's, you know, special education courses, there's a lot of different offerings for, you know, districts across the area that they serve. So, just very quick, a little reminder about that.
Great, thank you very much. Any further announcements? Seeing no further announcements. Public comments? There are comments from the public. Just, there's no microphone to come forward to, so just come forward generally to approach the committee, identify yourself. You'll have three minutes for your comment. I don't think we have our little clock that we have before. Which I wish we did, but.
Yeah, I can bring it up.
Okay, we'll see if we have any. Yes, sir. If you have a public, a comment about an agenda item, should we wait until the agenda comes up? Absolutely not. You should come forward now, because we didn't organize ourselves to have public comment within the agenda. So, the time to speak would be now. I recognize that's challenging sometimes, if you prefer to have heard it and have some back and forth in it. So, I apologize for that. No problem. I guess we're, I guess we're ready. I've got a spot here.
Very good.
Are you good?
Thanks. My name is Nate Buddington. I'm a parent of a recent graduate, who's a sophomore in college, in a junior in the high school. I think you have a letter from the, that I had written to the committee about requesting an audit, a professional audit of handicapped accessibility for the Amherst school system. I entered into this world not voluntarily, 2015. February 8, my daughter suffered a pretty severe autoimmune attack at the middle school and within a couple of hours, she was paraplegic. And so, there's this whole world that my wife and I, my daughter, are now a part of. The schools have been remarkably supportive in many, many ways. I think I mentioned in the letter that the return-to-school plan that was designed by Mary O'Brien, a nurse, the middle school, and Ron Bahonowitz, the people at Spalding Rehab Hospital, said it was the best they've ever seen. And continuing up until now, from the superintendent to both principals, guidance office, the peers, the teachers, just tremendous support that we're very grateful for. And it's had a big impact on my daughter's development. She's, she's in good shape emotionally and physically, as much as she can be. And some of that has come from the good support we've had from the schools. The trick is, the degree to which I think accessibility is not folded into the sort of social justice paradigm at the school, in the way that I think it should be. And there's physical manifestations for that. There's things that are really inaccessible to kids who are handicapped that kind of should have been fixed a long time ago. The steps to the gymnasium, we made a request a couple of years ago to have a lift put in there. It was just installed a couple of weeks ago, ready to go a couple of weeks ago. The stage isn't accessible. Other things that I noted in my letter. So, really, I think what we're asking for is certainly an audit, so that we know what we're up against. What are the, what are the problems that we have in these buildings with access? We're probably never going to be able to bring these buildings to ADA standards. Some of these things maybe just cost prohibitive, but we don't even know what the issues are. And I think that's been clear to me. Ron Bahonowitz was a great ally for us and I think he was embarrassed by parts of the school that were inaccessible. And he was just completely on top of things. And his departure, we noticed that. I mean, I'm very thankful for, for Ron's presence in, in our life for the, for the last few years. So, just to do an audit, so we know what we're up against, so as monies become available, as grants may become available, maybe we can knock some of these things off to make this school more friendly and more inclusive, which is different than accessible, for kids, teachers, parents, who are mobility-challenged. And also to think about ways in terms of just kind of the consciousness of how we operate as a community and the schools, to figure out how we're going to place accessibility and inclusion for the handicapped within the social justice paradigm. So, thanks for considering that, I appreciate it.
And as a reminder, this is, this is an item that's on our intended agenda for discussion and we will have that discussion. Are there further public comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period. Do we have any subcommittee updates? I guess we kind of got one from the representative of the Collaborative for Educational School Services. Anything else? Seeing nothing else, we'll move on. Superintendent's update.
So, I want to start by saying, I appreciate that the agenda, you got two copies of the agenda and that's, I'm not feeling well. And so, I'm going to, my goal is to make it to part D of the meeting and see how that goes. But the reason for the change is the topics beyond part D are doing continuing business. There's other staff members who can facilitate those sections, so.
Although I suppose that means if there's, if you're trying to shoehorn any questions for the superintendent, the superintendent's update is the right time to say. This reminds me of a related topic. Can I answer this question? Do it now, because he's going to disappear soon.
That is true. And so, I'm just going to highlight a couple of these. I apologize, some of the Amherst members heard these, but I think it's still worthy for the regional members to hear some of those updates as well. And one that was not on here was kind of in the lab as well. Really nice convocation for all staff, at this, Mr. Makima, for making comments on behalf of the committee. And our first that's celebration while hot, was very well-attended. There were 954 slices of pizza donated by area businesses and all of them are eaten Monday night of the evening. So, I like having some markers that way. Our Lata Cabinet, which we've talked about at this committee the last couple of years, organized a kickoff event for all of our staff members, particularly looking at staff members returning to the district. It was a really successful welcome event. She was here, but Mr. George Malcolm, the staff member, was central in organizing that, so I'll mention her name regardless, along with others. We're going to talk about ADA building audit later, so I'm going to skip this part, because I'll describe it in a much greater scale in a couple of minutes. Our open house schedule, so at the middle school, the open house is happening right now. And for the high school, it's October 11th, but after, we just left that. Jessica Minahan, who's an author, she was here last year to work with staff, and then she did a lot of work both with Summit Academy, right at the beginning of the school year, and then the high school and middle school as well. She's an expert on anxiety and how it manifests in students and how it manifests very differently in different students. And so, we had a family event, parent guardian event, with 180 attendees. I want to thank CPAC and our SSO office for putting that on. The feedback was very positive. We had a riot. We had a RIAC, Provational Imbalance Advisory Committee that I serve on, the DESI committee, so they met Monday. And the type, the topics are listed below that we've talked about, but Mr. Cunningham was able to come into the meeting with Ms. Solomon, who signed a letter of support last year for the Amherst Futures Program, which Mr. Cunningham will talk a little bit, to talk about what we're doing in Amherst, as well as in the area of increasing the percentage of staff of color within our schools. We've always seen it been a really good topic of conversation for that group. We'll skip social media, so I can turn down Mr. Cunningham for the district-wide updates, and then I'll provide some regional specific updates.
So Saturday, this past Saturday, the 22nd, we had our first summit for the Paradigm Shift, which is the partnership program for Amherst and the diverse teacher workshops with five colleges. We have currently four pairs who are attending the program and having roles at Mount Holyoke. And in this summit, we had higher ed institutions, we had our partner schools such as Holyoke Schools and Springfield Schools. And what we looked at was what can we, whether as a district or as an institution, do to support our pairs who are looking to become teachers? And what do we currently do that may hinder them from moving on to those roles? So it was well-attended. We had about almost 70 people from, I guess, the higher ed and the mall, the school districts, parents, teachers, district administrators, hall of attendants. So it was a great program, and we look forward to having our second summit in the early part of next year, where we will also talk to principals and work with them on how to hire and minimize the implicit bias that they have in their hiring.
I'll move on to regional updates. Summit Academy, so Mr. Cunningham and I have spent quite a bit of time over at Summit Academy, making sure the students were well situated at the beginning of the school year. And many thanks to our facilities team and from the staff at Summit for getting that ball rolling very well, and the space looks great. It really, it's very welcoming, and I think Mr. McPherson's plan is the right amount of its own school, own identity, but also having the flexibility for when students or staff members want to be connected to the high school. And the, if you remember all the way back, when we looked at floor plans up on the screen, there was, there's an exterior sort of shed off that, and it existed before this move, but we're working on scheduling its removal, which will help also in terms of outdoor access as well. Just in, we talked a little bit about this, I think, at the end of the year, but, ooh, I'm skipping, so I'm going to stick with the second one. So at the end of the fiscal year, the state ended with a $1 billion roughly surplus. The governor filed a supplemental budget to how that money should be spent. Some was put into, was intended to be put into the rainy day fund. I don't have a technical number for that.
The rainy day fund.
All right, the rainy day fund. But there was a significant amount of funds that were put into education, both in terms of school safety, school safety broadly, so it's not just about school resource officers, something like that that many schools have, but mental health professionals. There was also an increase in regional transportation and specialized circuit breaker, and the governor's filed that, and there's not been action taken by the legislature. And so it just is one of these things hanging out there that we don't know if that money's coming in or not, particularly at the regional level because of, as opposed to the other elementary districts. Regional transportation for sure, but circuit breaker is a much larger, has a much larger impact on the regional schools than it does at the elementary level. This is, this is no small amount of change that's at stake, so I think I'll leave it to other members who maybe want to talk about advocacy at some point, but right now there's a lot of uncertainty of where that sits. Couple of weeks ago, the High School Community Day, so this is something that was started a couple of years ago in an effort to bring students together and to start the school year in a way where students are connecting with their peers and staff members in ways to build community within the school. Talk about the school norms, which you can see there below, but the activities include fun things like dunk tank, Mr. Jackson's very good sport about that, and games, to really get out of the academic mindset that was, you know, our high school has, like many high schools, and really to remind ourselves about the human aspect of, you know, roughly 1,100 people spending most of their day in one site, and we should build those human connections. It's highly successful, luckily the weather worked out well for us. We did receive about $20,000 of emergency impact aid for displaced students, mostly in our case from Puerto Rico, not exclusively, but mostly from Puerto Rico based on the hurricanes from last year from the federal government. Previously, we talked about the funds that were slated to come from the state government on that. And lastly, just wanted to share some of the key work that, you know, work streams for this year. Certainly, as we talked about last year, it was the capital item of the master planning study and looking forward on that, so we know how bids end, and we're in a process of getting towards being able to select someone to help us think about what are we doing with our spaces at the secondary level. Similarly, we'll be focusing on the math curriculum and instruction program review and looking for some external folks to help us think about that and take a look at what we're doing seven through 12, really six through 12, because our math curriculum is a six to eight math curriculum. Some more on that coming, and when we look at the future agenda items, you can see that these things are all slotted. Another one's the support of students' well-being, and that maybe sounds general, but for us it's really not, that the implications of how to approach well-being are many, but they all have the same focus. So things that we are all thinking about is what we hear. So we heard about anxiety about kids, like I talked about earlier, that's one response. Some of the vaping, right, so what's happening on the other side of the hall right now, that's another response. But, you know, we consistently get, continue to gather feedback about start time, right, and, you know, how can that be thought about? So we're really taking a holistic look at well-being, and that's going to be something that we'll continue to talk about throughout the year. The strategic planning process, which we'll talk about later tonight, and then invariably budgets and assessments will be a topic that comes up throughout this year, and we've got slotted up multiple times as we look at the draft agendas coming up. So I thought it was just worthwhile to share, you know, Rob's doing more than these things, but in terms of where the workflows are and work streams, this is where a lot of our attention's at.
Any questions for the committee?
I just have a comment on as far as the support of students' well-being. I've heard from three or four, shoot, three parents who are concerned that their children or their students will not use the bathrooms because of the fear of being tapped for vaping or juuling, and they're just, they're not going to the bathroom all day.
Well, thank you, that's the first I'm hearing of that, but we're trying to set up a meeting anyway, so I'd love to hear more about that and share that with Mr. Jackson.
Thank you.
Any questions for the superintendent before this item is closed? Seeing none? There's no real charge report. I think the thing for me, and actually the last, the last item on the superintendent's update was one of the things that Mike and I talked about, is that we, I mean, this follows on from the retreat, is trying to organize things and organize our conversation in ways that both are strategic, but also the work of our committee month to month and meeting to meeting. We can see what the roadmap is, where we're going from September to December and March, because it'll sneak up on us. Before we know it, we're going to be in the middle of regional assessment and budget conversations, and then seemingly everything else gets obliterated by that. And then anything else that we cared about is, I mean, you'll still be doing your work, the team is doing your work, staff will be doing your work, but in terms of the committee's engagement, we can easily get waylaid by that, and I'm hoping we can keep on top of this stuff, but also as a committee, have all hands on deck in making sure we do that, which is part of the, it's why there was a tiny little teaser at the end, but it's going to be bigger in the future agendas. And actually, do we have, we don't have the attachment, we don't have the handout for meeting topics, do we? There was distributed, there was one distributed the other day for the Amherst School Committee. Did we distribute it electronically to the committee? We got to do that, because one of the goals we drew from the retreat of having a list of the topics that either, either the topical things that we figured when they were likely to come up in meetings, but also sort of the ordinary, we always have our budget meetings at this time things. We actually have, see, there it is. I'm not, yeah, we'll hand it around. I mean, there's the, there's the draft calendar that has those things on it. So I apologize if I wasn't circulated, and make sure the full committee has it.
We can make copies, there's a copy sheet.
Okay, that would be wonderful. And seeing that is done.
Mr. Buddington?
Yeah?
Just one quick question. I wonder if you can introduce the newest member of the committee?
We're about to do that.
Oh, great.
If you notice, the next item on the, if you notice, the next item, A, is student school committee representative. And so I was literally about to say, with that, you may have noticed, we have someone sitting here with us who has not previously been sitting here with us. Do you want to make an introduction?
Sure. Zev Yulon is a student who's been involved in the government and was connected to other students, like the student last year who was the student rep on the school committee. And Ms. Haygood talked about a process at the high school to identify someone who would be an excellent representative of the high school student body, who had strong opinions, who wouldn't be trying to share them, but also was a listener and could connect with a large group of people who were elected officials and staff. And we're thrilled you're here, and we've heard wonderful things about you from Mr. Jackson and Ms. Haygood, and I just want to thank you for your service as a star.
Welcome. If you have anything you want to say, you can say it anyways.
I mean, not really.
And don't be shy, though, if anything comes up you want to talk about, ask questions. I hadn't thought about this, but if we'd done that at the beginning, one of the coolest things is you can actually ask questions of the superintendent during his update and grill him if you want.
Seems like it might be encouraged.
Yeah, well, why not? So welcome. Onto item B, physical disability access discussion, which is also encompasses the question of whether we're going to do some sort of a survey.
Yeah, so I want to thank Mr. Buddington for his kind comments earlier and sharing his experience and his family's experience in our school district. And the idea is a great one, and I've talked to, Dr. Brady is also sick, so she's not here, otherwise she'd be here to share a little more, maybe I'm spending too much time with Dr. Brady or vice versa, I don't know. But what we've done since we got the communication from Mr. Buddington is we reached out to a couple vendors who specialize in doing, completing ADA audits in schools. We did that in a couple ways, just talking to other, Dr. Brady talked to other student service directors in the area. One of them actually did an ADA audit in an elementary school that's part of our region, it's not part of a district I work for, but it's in the four regional schools, four regional towns. And so we got a pretty good sense of the cost and what we could come out of that, and I think as Mr. Buddington said, some things are pretty obvious, we know are problematic, and other things are less visible unless you are experiencing them through a lens that not many of us have, about looking about mobility and how that works. And we think it completely makes sense to follow through on Mr. Buddington's suggestion, and we feel like, you know, through our facilities revolving account, that the cost is something that we'd be able to manage without affecting other budget items that we have. So we're actively pursuing support, we're getting this done in the current year, and one of the reasons we feel such urgency, in addition to the, what Mr. Buddington shared, is we would like to see if we can get this done before we get to a budget season and capital requests. One of the frustrating things, and I think it played out actually in one of the stories that Mr. Buddington shared, was that the capital process can seem exceedingly slow when there are things that need to be fixed that are high cost, because it's a process that involves, depending on the time of year, right, a request that's made, discussion of this body, then it goes to all four towns, it goes to town meetings, historically it went to four town meetings to be passed. The money then became available July 1st. Many of these projects can't be done except for when students aren't present for long periods of time, so if the money becomes available, some, we try to get it done in the summer that the money becomes available, sometimes that's not possible for a whole host of meetings. So we'd really like to have the audits done in the sooner side, so that when we get into capital season, it can be part of that consideration discussion about what the needs of the district are. So I think we'll have more to share at the next meeting in October about where we are, but we have three estimates from three different organizations, and we've already checked references on a number of them. I want to thank Dr. Brady, couldn't be here, she's done most of this work, and I've connected with her quite often on it, and I really want to appreciate the public comment and the idea about how do we think about the accessibility of buildings, and the first way is understanding where our buildings are accessible and where they're not. Just as a little background I should have started with, the ADA code, and not that I'm an expert in this, but one of the challenges that our buildings were all at the regional level, all built many, many years ago, the high school had their last major change in 1998, and code, the ADA code continues to change and provide more and more access and mobility for students and families and staff members. But unless you're doing a major update, things aren't so visible, because buildings, these buildings were built before that thinking went into the design of buildings. And so we know that there are many areas of these buildings that are not accessible, and having a better grasp of where those are specifically, the ideas of what it would take to fix it, would be a really positive outcome for us to move back to the committee to discuss as we look to capital for FY '20.
So a couple of things before we broaden discussion. One, the answer to the question of are we going to do an ADA survey, to use a shorthand for it, of our schools is yes. And the answer to whether we're going to do it ideally in a time frame that allows us to build in at least some of that work into this coming year's capital budget is yes. Do you, just as a matter of scope, and you may have said it's the beginning, so I apologize, I've zoned out on this. What buildings does this include?
So at this point, since we're at a regional meeting, we're looking at the regional buildings, but we are looking at the buildings in our other, Dr. Brady, I'm.
Can I ask you a funny question?
Yeah.
If you forgot where you were, and you answered like just an ordinary person on the street.
Yeah.
What buildings are going to be included?
We're looking at all the buildings that I'm superintendent of.
Okay, thank you. I apologize, but it's sort of like I.
No, I just try to be cautious.
No, I know, I know, but we, I promise we won't discuss the elementary school buildings in this meeting. But the answer to the question is they're part of it. Cool, so the committee have comments, questions, anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to read a letter that our CPAC chair had asked CPAC liaisons, Mr. Sullivan, to read.
Okay.
Part of this. This is from Nancy Stewart, our chair at CPAC. She was going to read it, she wasn't able to be here tonight. CPAC would like to express our appreciation to the Buddington family. The Buddington family has reached out to CPAC and made us aware of accessibility barriers facing our students. These accessibility barriers have prevented some students from participating in a true inclusive learning environment. Our students, families, and staff deserve that. Today I am writing on behalf of CPAC. CPAC is requesting that the district conduct a formal review of our school's buildings' compliance with the ADA standards and design requirements. This review should be completed by an outside consultant. This consultant should be familiar with ADA standards for accessible design. Reviewers should seek to understand from community members currently in our buildings how these accessibility issues are affecting staff, students, and families. We are requesting that the results and findings of this review are shared with CPAC. The district has a legal obligation to provide our students with an inclusive learning environment in every facet of school space. Our students have a legal right to participate fully to their ability in all school activities and school-sponsored events. Please consider CPAC's request as a district priority. We look forward to partnering with the district in creating plans to accomplish fixes to ensure our schools are inclusive learning. That's the end of the letter, and I just wanted to thank Mr. Buddington for raising this issue with CPAC and emailing us and coming up to speak. I think it's always good for us to get objective information and then hear it personally. And I really want to point out that I really appreciate the mode in which he engaged, both CPAC and the committee, wasn't accusatory, and yet he was very clear, a matter of fact, and particularly since most of these changes are going to be helping students that come afterwards, it was really in the service of continuous improvement of our district, so it's a model of interacting with our committee, I thought, so I really appreciate that.
One of the things that came to mind in the discussion from the public comment and also your explanation, I think the ADA compliance study will probably tell us a lot about our building in terms of how we meet the regulatory requirements. I'm assuming that's sort of their general, you know, concentration area. I think it would also be interesting to know if they have experience in the broader issues that got brought up, you know, because entering a classroom or entering a stage is one thing, but to really not have the building put up boundaries is a little bit of a, more of a stretch goal than the law necessarily is going to provide. And so I'm wondering where we can get that sort of input, if that will be coming from an ADA study, or whether there's some other resources we could reach out to in addition to the families' experiences that might help us kind of craft a long-term plan for our buildings.
Yeah, so my sense from all the different vendors that we spoke to is that they're highly conscious of, some of this is about code and some of this is not about code, and it's about that feeling of inclusion, and I think you're speaking about that, I heard also from Mr. Buddington. And the good news that I've come to understand is that the code is getting a little bit broader, so some of this, I mean, I want to take a step back for a second. So when we think about buildings being up to code, code changes, but buildings aren't forced to be up to the current code unless they do major renovation in the building. So I think, I just want to make sure everyone has that common sense, so when we think up to code, it's up to code as if we were doing, if this building was built in 2018 and not when it was current, when it was built, either before code or when the code looked very differently. But the upsets of the code are getting a little less technical, and they're still the technical aspects, but they're getting to include more broadly things. things that affect the individual experience of folks who are in buildings, it's not just school buildings. I think the comparison I'm making, and it's not the best analogy, but if you look at rebuilding codes or lead code, there's an awful lot that's not actually about literally like the energy efficiency, that's about how close is it to a bus stop, right? Can people get there without driving their car, right? And ADA code is getting similar to that, where it's not actually just technically about the quote-unquote "energy efficiency" in terms of that, but it's actually looking at the broader surrounds of what is the experience of someone who may have mobility challenges entering the school, being spacious in the school, assuming the school's empty, assuming the school's full, and that those range of experiences. So with every version, I think it's getting not less technical, but it's being more inclusive of the technical and the less technical aspects.
There may be barriers to entry then on part of the code. How are you going to help determine those?
So I think all the firms we spoke to, I think it's similar to the point that Ms. Kaczynski raised. They're looking at both, you know, the things that are in the code, but also the lived experiences of individuals in buildings.
Okay. Are there other comments or questions? Seeing none, thanks, and we look forward to it. Let's keep this on the agenda in the near term so we can keep on talking about what's happening and provide the public also with that awareness. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Item C, strategic planning update. Were we actually running ahead of time?
It happened last, two years ago, that's what happened. We were on time and then we blew it up.
I apologize. I wasn't saying that out of any undue superstition thereof. It's actually, I mean, one, apart from the fact that it's utterly astonishing, it's also just because, you know, I'm hoping at some point in the near future we don't get to an hour and people wish, you know, they couldn't get here until 7:50 and they only wanted to go up. So I hope that's not the case. And it is being taped, so hopefully they can catch up a little later.
Yeah, and so in the pack, if this was toward the very end, if it gets like the third and the second to last page, because I've heard it's a little like a new document. So if you're looking, this document looks like this. Let's see if I can keep up the pace of the meeting, because I think I'll do some brief description, and I'd like to come back with more detail at the next meeting, either in October or November. So we continue to work with Dr. Musad, who many of you met last year when he became his first meeting. I would certainly invite him to come back. I think it would be worthwhile at some point to have him come back and talk about his facility's work. And what you see is that there's two, we're using the Planning for Success template, which is in process, which is a DSSI-supported process around strategic planning. And, excuse me, if you look at the page before, it has some, you know, an FAQ about strategic planning and Amber's as well that Dr. Musad has put together. I think actually the middle school principals are going over this at the middle school open house. They're soliciting participation from folks. We developed with Dr. Musad a sort of more condensed document to describe what's strategic planned about, why are we doing this, what's the process look like? So allow for a little easier access, because strategic planning can get a little cumbersome to talk about. So we asked Dr. Musad to look with us to involve that. So there's two teams that are working concurrently. So there's a leadership team, which involves principals, assistant principals, directors, there's Tony Hamer himself. And then there's also a planning team. The planning team is what we're going to be forming in the next month or so. And that's a 30, 35-person broader group that involves many of the people on the leadership team, but also includes parents guardians, folks from representative agencies like CPAC, school equity task force that would be invited to be part of it. And the reason that there's, the rationale of having two groups doing in some way similar tasks is it highlights the diversity of thought in the groups. And it's important for the educational leaders to be able to have conversations. It's also really important for them to hear from the larger community. And so it's, the one challenging thing about the chart is that timeline doesn't, it's not chronological. Like if you look at like where we are on the leadership team, we've had two meetings, we have another one next Wednesday, whereas the first planning team meeting doesn't happen until Halloween. So you have to orient yourself a little bit that way. But in general, the process on both sides is starting with a visioning, trying to get folks to be open, you know, ask open-ended questions about what we want for the future of the district, what we want that to look like, what does it feel like five years from now in the district, what would one imagine that to look like? To engage the community, to have a broad stakeholder group of folks doing that, and for that to be recorded. And then Dr. Musad, one of the key roles he plays is he records everything at every meeting. And it's incredibly important that we come up with this treasure trove of what different people said at each meeting so that we can come back to it, and it becomes an artifact, particularly on the planning team of the work that occurs. After that happens, we get into data to better understand. So we've thought about the future, we then go back to the present to understand what's currently happening. And what data do we have that describes our experience in my data? We could look at achievement data, climate data, perception data. And the group will define the data it wants to look for. We have, you know, we're often in the drip category of data-rich information port because we have so much data. And this is actually saying, what do we really want to look at and deep on to tell us where we are currently? At that point, you use that data to come up with a root cause analysis. So in essence, why do we think these trends are emerging in our schools? What might be factors, develop hypotheses? And that process is really important because you want to compare where you are, maybe how we got to where we are, to where we want to be. And that's the thrust of the first couple meetings is that process of identifying the present, what led us to the present and the future, and the gap between where we are and what we want to be. That really leads to thinking about outcomes, what outcomes we want to track, what outcomes we want to stay with over time. And how does that drive initiatives? So we want to think about the outcomes being five years from now, what do we want for our students? What do we want for our school to look like? The initiatives come from, how do we get there? What's the gap between, you know, the future, the present, what we want for the future, and what's the pathway? I'm being a little verbose, I apologize, but I think it's just worth taking the time to walk through this. At that point, we can get to a vision statement of defining that, both the process and the outcomes we want. We want the quality plan review, and essentially what that means is even if you have 35, 40 people working on something, we actually want to get broader stakeholder input than just those 35 or 40. We don't want to bank on the fact that they're perfectly representative of the larger community. Because that's, it's impossible to create that scenario. So we want to make sure that we're sharing that, whatever the draft is at, with the broader community as well as the committee, to get a feedback along the way in an iterative fashion. And that the process, you know, we have some placeholder dates there because we know in some communities that process can go a little more quickly, and in some communities that process takes a little more. So we, working with Albert, we want to have placeholders to say, maybe this will go as smooth as four, five meetings that can happen, and maybe we need five or six meetings for that to happen. The second page really gets on developing the action plan. So if you have that long-range vision, you've got initiatives that you want to have moving forward, then you want to break it down into what do we actually, how do we get from where we are? Not to the five-year plan, but what does that look like in year one, year two? And getting a little more fine-grained in the details. Because at the end of, you know, what I'll call the strategic plan, the green section here, the creating the plan, you're still at that, you know, broad, somewhat broad level of what are the initiatives going to get us? What are the outcomes we want? And then you have to say, how do we get there? And so that's that second phase of developing the action plans, is getting very specific, very detailed, both on the action processes as well as the outcome we'd look for as interim outcomes. Even if we have five-year outcomes, we don't want to wait five years to say, oh my goodness, we weren't doing well all those years. We want to have those interim measures built in. And I think the last thing that I didn't say for the planning team is we're looking, that'll be, I didn't mention staff as well, and staff are a key component of the planning team. Parents guardians, larger community, but staff members and both principals. The principals of all three of our secondary schools have already spoken about this with their staffs on the orientation day, and I did a convocation at a general level, which would be the primary, some of the primary work of our district this year.
I have an awkward question to ask at a school committee meeting. What's the role of the school committee in any of this?
So we're going to ask for school committee representatives on the planning team, and that our plan is to bring this back frequently to school committees so that you're getting not just the rest of the process, but actually some of the products, products, excuse me, that are being developed, and that's part of the iterative loop. And the benefit is twofold. One is that you're the elected officials of the four communities, and you should be part of that, whether you're literally at these meetings or not. But also, this is a public meeting, so it's important that we're sharing this information with the public. People can come to make public comments and offer their opinions in public ways, which we want to engender the kind of transparency that that would create.
Yeah, I mean, the thing we've talked about as an objective is to have a three- to five-year strategic plan, annual action plans, and then have that tied not only to budgeting decisions, the prioritization of how we sort of organize our work, and also to the superintendent, your annual goals and the evaluation of those goals. So I think that there are very practical reasons to have the school committee involved. And so I would hope that we'd have at least a couple members of the school committee that would be involved in the planning team. I recognize that would probably take a lot of work or time on their part. So at some point, maybe in the next meeting we have, there should be, maybe get some sort of, I don't know what people would want, but some sort of description around what the commitment would look like for that. It'd be ideal, and then, you know, based on the sizing of the planning team, what the right number of that is. We can talk about that later. And then try to figure out how to have the committee engaged in an iterative manner with sort of the deliverables that come out of that. Because it would be a disaster if there was some sort of gap between the way the committee was understanding and thinking about this work and what the actual product was. That would basically mean this didn't, this is a failed process, right? That can't happen. It has to be something where there's a felt-tight alignment in it. Is there anyone?
Yeah, so first, very small comment on the FAQ. If you're going to use this for public distribution, you want to make it real clear as part of the region.
Yeah, that's true.
If you're not totally in the weeds on this, that's pretty easy to confuse. So my bigger question was the point this man Akimari raised, which is, it is interesting in this whole process of coming up with the district plan, which, I mean, according to the Planning for Success model, should really be driving everything, right? I mean, when we do superintendent goals, it should be in line with that. If we do school committee goals, they should be in line with that. And, you know, it ends with an action plan, which we'll tie right into what our focus is. So the lack of mention of the school committee is notable in that. And I realize this is just talking about the two teams. And I know you mentioned, you know, I'll come back for, you know, update of how it's going and, you know, here's what the deliverables are. But it leaves me a little confused as to what the role of the planning team should be and what the role of the school committee should be in defining the five-year strategy. Because, you know, it's, on the one hand, it's great to have that big of a community group that's willing to engage for that long. And, you know, we want to take full advantage of that level of community input. On the other hand, you know, it's Wednesday mornings, so anybody who has a job can't do it. And I'm sure that if time wasn't a factor, we would all love to be, you know, talking about strategic plan for hours. And so I feel like the school committee's role in this should be a little bit more in the definition phase and have a little bit more say in where it's going. I guess, I mean, I don't want to sound too, you know, negative about it, but it, I also, the other thing is I wouldn't want to set people's expectations up wrongly who are going to volunteer a lot of time, their own time for the planning team, and saying, you know, you're going to be defining the vision and then get to the end and have the school committee maybe have a different point of view on it. So, you know, I'm not trying to criticize, I'm just trying to say I don't understand yet where those two pieces connect. Can I respond to that briefly?
Sure.
So, and I apologize about my best. So I think at the end of the plan, what's not explicit on here is that that plan would have been brought to the school committee for a vote, which is a little different than what you're saying, but I think it's an important piece. Because I'm not talking, it doesn't totally address your question, but I think, I wanted to say that out loud at this meeting, that a strategic plan would be brought for the committee to offer feedback and vote on at the end. Which is different than the involvement piece and how that iterative piece of work, but I think it's worth noting.
So I think we've been talking about the process here for only over a year, or close to. And I think one of the things that I found notable about it was that the process was one that was trying to get a broad community input into the process. And at first, when I talked to Dr. Musad, how do, you know, there's a lot of people, how do you filter that down into actionable things, right? Designing a strategic plan by committee sounds like a nightmare, right? In terms of trying to manage everybody's expectations and inputs. And I think this process allows a pretty large group to get some input in at various stages and the whole community to have some input at various stages. And from my perspective, sitting here at the school committee, I think it's wise for it not to be a strategic plan based on the nine of us at this table, that this school serves a much broader community than we necessarily represent at the table. And so I think we'll have opportunity in the process to provide some input, especially, you know, if there's somebody who is able to be a member of the planning team. And that I kind of would like, from my perspective, like to see the process turn out. I think there were some good examples of the process gone through at other schools, and the outcomes seemed very, people were very positive about the strategic plan that was generated out of them. So I guess my summary point is I think I'm confident that the process that we've chosen is going to be one that will get us a result that the four towns can support the strategic plan from a broad sense.
Is there any?
I actually, I think I would agree with that for the most part, that I think that what I'm looking for more than anything else, I think, is the input from staff and from administrators and from the community to help shape the direction of our schools. I think both from expertise perspective, also just from direct impact, that seems to be the right approach, and it seems to make the most sense to me. I do think, though, that, you know, incorporating at least articulating the points where the school committee will be involved in this grid will be helpful because it seems for us to work towards, and then also to be mindful of as we build and have our agendas, to move forward, to think that, you know, yes, we want to have these points done and ready to share with the committee for input and feedback and all that. I would also add that I think adding in, I see a couple of places where it's explicitly said "community engagement", and I think, again, just to help people understand what we're working towards and when we're ready to, you know, even though those might shift a little bit, but at least seeing multiple points throughout this grid and to be aware that we are planning for that community engagement in very big ways will help people to understand that this is definitely a process that requires and demands their feedback and their input. Aside from that, I mean, I think that, you know, most of this timeline makes a lot of sense. I'm really glad that we're doing this. I think it's vitally important. And I hear a lot of the frustration that's, you know, been going through the community, I think, for some time now, that we haven't had something like this. So it's great to say that we finally have a plan in action that has been rolled out, that is, you know, ready to go. So I'm looking forward to seeing this developed.
Any comments? Yes, Ms.?
And I think one thing that might also be nice is that I might, you know, I assume this would be an ongoing effort, that right now, this is the beginning, the first step, to have a team to develop the three-year plan. Then there's, you know, they'll be following up on that. And so, and that's, you know, one place where we'd overlap with the school committee because that goes into our, into the year evaluation. But just maybe making that clear, like how that process would go, would continue on in the coming years and what.
So I, I mean, I think, I think all the points that have been made resonate with me. I mean, obviously, I mean, in my view, the leadership team logically is comprised of the educational leadership of the district, and that's appropriate, and it's the way it should be. And you want to engage the community and stakeholders, and you want to know that they're helping to define the products and the output and the shared vision. I actually agree with Mr. Dowling, on the other hand, that this looks like, the chart looks like something written by somebody who didn't really think of, didn't sit down, and they thought about the role of the community, and they thought about the role of the educational leadership, but they didn't particularly conceptualize what the role of the school committee is. And I don't think that's the end of the world, but I think it needs to be called out more specifically, both in terms of having, I mean, I think it's appropriate, if we're going to have school committee representation on a planning team, to identify them as a specific stakeholder, because from a sort of legal and statutory perspective, if you have the educational leadership of the district, you also have, you know, the elected board that's overseeing them. And I think they, they're different than just other community people who might be, choose to be involved. I think they have a formal role, we, they- formal role, we, they, conceptually. We have a formal role in the process that I think should be called out. But I think that's also important, because sort of as a normative element, what it does is it organizes structures at times so that we're thinking about how this reflects goal, annual goals for the committee, for the superintendent, budgeting and prioritization, the fact that at the end of this product, there actually is going to be a vote. And I think, so I think there's a, I think it gives clarity to the public. It also gives even clarity to the committee, because if there's a couple of people on the committee who are able to volunteer their time to work on this, it's not like, I mean, I mean this in the nicest way, I don't mean this negatively, but we have subcommittees where it's sort of like, go off to the audit committee, do no harm, give nice feedback, listen to interesting audit. Like, you know, no one really thinks that anything's happening in that subcommittee that necessarily is rocking the world and changing the world, necessarily. And you kind of hope there isn't, because if there is, it's a real problem. This is sort of the opposite of that. This is something where whoever's working on behalf of the school committee is going to have a real obligation to reflect back in the committee itself, and not that, not that any of you would, or I would, but we can't check out, right? Because at the end of this process, there's going to be something coming forward that's going to then guide all the work we do. So I would just say, I think, I agree with everything you said here, but you got to call out the school committee more and just, and lay out where we're fitting in the process, and then, I think, think about where we're involved in the committee. I don't know if the committee makes sense to people, or is it?
I completely agree. And what I did bring this time was a document from last spring, which talked about different stakeholder groups, and the school committee was on that stakeholder group that would be part of the planning team. So I apologize for not being more explicit about that here. And I'm talking to Dr. Musa tomorrow, so I'll talk through and bring back more specifics around the touch points where, not just the community members who may join the planning team, but the full committee gets to review.
And this is one of those things where I think, if the vice chair is willing, I would volunteer myself in the vice chair. Well, you can say no, right? But I mean, or it's, you know, time or whatever. But, I mean, but if it's possible, both of us could, should act, should actually talk to, you know, as you're going through that iterative process, talk to us and sit down so that we can help reflect back what we're hearing and help just, so that the next time there's a draft that comes forward, it'll probably be entirely baked, and everyone can say this is perfect.
Yeah, that makes total sense.
Yeah. Is there anything?
Yeah, so I like what Mr. Nakajima spelled out about the school committee understanding what those touch points are. And, you know, hopefully, we have available time on the committee, people who can be there, sort of report back. I think, in addition to sort of calling the school committee's role out, calling out major points of opportunities for community input at all stages would also be good, because there's going to be a number of people who would really want to do this, who absolutely can't, because it's on Wednesday mornings. And so they're going to be like, okay, I want to be able to provide input in more than just a email the team whenever you want kind of way. You know, and before, like, the vision is baked, right? And all the other things flow down. So having that as kind of the header timeline, I think will be important for people to feel like, oh, if you didn't, weren't able to get on that large, you know, so it's nice to get that many voices. You start to get a little bit of the benefit of the wisdom of the crowd, but it's not necessarily 100% representative of everybody and all their concerns. So just, you know, it's good to hear that that's a primary focus of the team.
Very briefly, and one of the reasons, one of the primary topics in the first day of the planning team is community engagement is, you know, we met down and talked about it, and the Dr. Musa opinion, I tend to agree with him, is it's great for a small group to talk about community engagement, better for 35 people coming from different towns, communities, micro-communities, to then talk about how to engage the, you know, the larger communities and smaller communities within our towns. And so that topic isn't engaging that group, that topic is actually gathering a plan that the planning team can work on to how the process can be very inclusive. So it's intentionally not on here because it's designed to be part of the process where the planning team helps draft and work on how to engage the community.
Right. So are there any other questions or comments? Or we'll just move on from this item right now. The next item on our agenda is superintendent goals discussion. Do we have anything to reflect to, or are we going to talk?
We can talk.
Okay, you want to start talking?
I would. So what's worked well for-
By the way, this means we'll be listening. Just to clarify that, so apparently that's what we're having.
Well, mostly, I'll talk briefly, and I'm actually looking forward to listening. So, you know, Sharon and I spoke, and I think what's worked well in the other districts is hearing from the committee about some of their, not looking for anyone here to draft goals, but some priorities you have, I shared about some of the work streams that from the administrative side we'll be spending a lot of time on. But what I didn't want to do was draft goals, priority clearly from committee members about some thoughts on priorities. So what I'd like to do is just, I wonder if we can just go one by one, if people want to share, so I can take notes on that, and come back to the next meeting with some goals drafted. That includes some of the themes that I hear from committee members.
Okay. And is it possible that, so how many meetings do we have in October?
One.
So are we going to try to talk and vote at the same time as?
Sorry, I left that out as well. Apologizing.
It's okay, you're not feeling bad.
Yeah. So my hope was I'd take this in, and I'd share it electronically with the committee, and could take individual feedback before we get to the, potentially 16th, 23rd, whatever that meeting date ends up being, so that it, well, wouldn't be collective feedback. I could take that individual feedback to make edits before the meeting.
Just sort of putting that people in the front, I guess it's your mind, but also everyone else's mind, that we'd be voting on this soon, because obviously the years, we're already into the year. So here's what we can do. We can start on one end, go around each committee member. If you want to pass and think about it for the moment, we can come back to it. No, I'm saying, if you have anything to say at the moment, if you have something at the moment, then you can pass. Pass, okay.
Well, I'd just like to say, it sounds like we should really be trying to, just trying to go back, I might keep thinking about it, was this print on this update? But it seems like you laid out some very reasonable bullets under, and applied on your update for key work for 2018, 2019. So I guess the one thing that's not on here that definitely was an issue last year, and I think should continue to be on our radar in your goals, would be kind of continuing that work to make sure that the hiring process is transparent, inclusive, you know, that we're continuing to try to really increase the diversity of our, of our staff, and educators and all of it. I will also reserve the right to come back and give you another comment by email or later on tonight. And then, I think this ADA work and things like that could fall under the broader idea of inclusivity, that this hiring could also be a supplement on. But I, I guess I just don't see that explicitly laid out in those bullets, and so I'd like to see something related to that. And where we can, I mean, I just think we should try to, given this strategic planning process and all of these things going on at the same time, it would be great to have a way for us to organize this, so it's, there are intersections for you, so it's not like five different masterpieces you have to answer.
Okay, I'll give you three, as quick as I can, just ideas to think about, but not fully formulated. You mentioned early start time, so I'm not saying a goal should be changed early start time. But I would like to be able to know, what are the barriers right now to us even thinking about it? Is it just because our plate is still full? Okay, then at what point does our plate get less full that we could start thinking about it? And then if we did, we have plans that we can take off the shelf. What does that ideal even look like? Another thing is promoting or somehow raising the profile or expanding the integration of our arts. I constantly feel like our arts, in both the middle school and the high school, are so amazing. They're like so over the top. If you could, if we were known for nothing else, you know, you could, you could put arts up on and emphasize what an amazing job. And I think it's because we do so many other things well, and we have so many other priorities, that it doesn't necessarily get all the attention. When you look at it, it's amazing. And so this is kind of related to marketing and promotion, kind of related to arts integration, but it's the programming, it's the staff. We have some incredible staff and teachers that are the reason why the delivery is so amazing. Just, I would love to have a specific goal that leveraged that resource, right? And I guess the third thing, it was just a really less formed thought. When I saw the attendees at the anxiety presentation, that's pretty huge for a start of year, a topic like that. And so this kind of goes under the general heading of supportive students' wellbeing. And made me think of a question I had asked you during the, during the hiring process, and, you know, money was no object, you know, what, or what concerns you? And we were talking about student preparedness at the very earliest ages and what we can do. And, you know, we see this in preschool a little bit, it's just that there's, you know, life is changing, and kids are coming into our schools with a different set of needs. And it's kind of hard to articulate exactly what that is sometimes, because it, there's, it crosses three or four different streams. There's, there's, you know, some kids who have trauma, there's emotional issues, there's free education issues, there's, there's attention issues, you know. We talked about a couple days ago, technology and its influence, and what is that going to be like in 20 years, and how's that affect our learners? And it all sort of leads to this, what should schools be doing more to empower our students to survive and have this sort of self-sufficiency? It's really hard to articulate into a goal, but because you put support of students' wellbeing as a top bullet point, I thought I would just raise that. And given that the attention, effective attention on modern technology has been an issue of concern for me as a leader.
Thank you.
I don't have too much to add. I think certainly supporting this ADA audit process, I think that's not just in the, doesn't benefit just students with physical disabilities, but everybody in the school. And then, the support of students' wellbeing is certainly a very broad topic, so that we could find some specific ways we could narrow that down, whether it's early start times, but that's a great place to start.
Can I pass it on? Okay. So I think one of the goals should be around successfully completing the strategic planning process and the first year annual goal. I mean, the framework's laid out, but if I'm looking at the end of the year, I think it's really important that we, actually, just to echo this, I think it was the dominant source of conversation, topic of conversation at our retreat. And it's kind of funny, because it's something that a lot of us expressed, that that's not only important for you and for what goes on for the school, but honestly, in terms of organizing the work we do and trying to be as helpful as possible. So I think that, so it's a funny thing to lay on you, but since you're the educational leader of the district, such is life. That's one. We previously had a budgeting item on there around managing the four towns and dealing with budget and prioritizing, you know, the quality of support for our staff and teachers and things like that. And I think that's probably a recurrent need, you know. I think a third thing which can be called out a number of ways, but an explicit annual goal around our racial and social justice commitment, whether that's on continuing professional development, support for diversity of hiring, and goals for the Alana Cabinet, or whether that's restorative justice and continuous improvement in learning around issues of discipline and things like that. I mean, you could go any number of directions. It could even frankly be, and I'm just making this up, but it could even, on sort of a meta-level, it could be about providing leadership around advancing, I think we had six or seven topics that were at various points of development that Ms. Cunningham presented on last year. It could even be about trying to advance some element of those things in the context of what's achievable at the moment. I'm not, but my point is, I'm throwing a couple ideas on there. My point is, we should, one of the goals should be calling out specifically some continued commitment and advancement around that as well. And I think, I still, I said this earlier this spring, in the summer, that if there was, I don't know what the methodology or the goal would be of trying to ensure continuous improvement around review of administrative or managerial practices in the district, but I still consider that to be important. Without meaning to call it out, at the beginning of our year, there was a discussion and a reworking around how we handle athletic fees and student schedules. And that was one of those things where it didn't really conform with the values that were set by, I think, the district as a whole. It didn't really conform with the values in more immediate policies that had been set by the committee, certainly around food service collection policy. And yet, it's one of those things where we kind of found out about, you know, we sort of discovered there was a problem after the problem blew up, as opposed to in advance of it blowing up. And I'm just trying to, I mean, this is one of those things where I'm just trying to, I'm trying to help. Like, I'd like, I'd like us to get ahead of those things and find some way to more systematically figure out how to get over them. I don't know what that looks like as a goal, because it ends up sounding bureaucratic, like review all existing purchases to ensure that they conform with best practices, or some garbage like that. And that, I'm not sure that captures the zeitgeist of what I'm trying to get at.
I follow you.
Okay, great.
So I think mine will echo a lot of what you've already heard, but I think diversity and inclusion, and there's various ways that could go, but I'd like to see part of that for student impact, part of it for our staff and the social justice. So maybe that's measured in a few, a few ways. Budget and long-term financial plans to stay affordable for our towns, this last budget cycle certainly highlights how most of our towns are, you know, don't have a lot of levy limit left, and we need to think about how our school fits in into that affordably and efficiently, and still providing the education we've come to expect. Strategic planning complete, I think, is a must-have. Professional development of staff, we talked a lot about, there's a few initiatives that have been going on in the last few years, and I think we can't expect to have really great education for our students if we're not investing in our staff. And then, student supports for social, emotional, emotional learning, and some of those initiatives that we've started, but I'd like to see them continue. And then, to echo this last one, is some way of measuring or keeping on top of what other areas, whether it's, you know, I think the school committee is trying to review our processes, but that we have, that the school has a similar, you know, continuing review cycle of practices within the school to make sure that they're in alignment with the district goals. And maybe that's, maybe to know what the district goals are first, but I think with it.
So I think, this is the hard part, going last always, you're in the competing mode.
Go ahead and do that.
We'll put a finer point on it. So I would absolutely agree. I think in terms of racial justice and equity, we have already gone and taken several very important steps in the past year, I think with Ms. Cunningham's leadership, and also with yours, Dr. Morris. But we have to do more, and we have to do better. And the school equity task force is actually in the process right now of recommending some goals for the school committee's consideration. I won't go into them now, because they're not on the agenda, but they will be here at the next meeting, hopefully. But I will say that I think to reflect back what has already been said by other committee members, especially focused on the diversity of educators and staff, understanding how incredibly important it is for our staff to actually reflect our student bodies, and to really think about how we are retaining, recruiting and retaining educators of color across, you know, our regional district is incredibly important. The other thing I would also say is, I would echo the strategic planning process. I think having, you know, an effective kickoff, even if it's a three to five-year plan, but making sure that this next year is really well-done and buttoned up, and that we have robust engagement plans that people understand, the school committee understands, the community understands, that, you know, that there's, all of that has been very well articulated. And that also frankly has buy-in from the town. I think that there's, you know, a lot of that that will involve the community and our town leaders to be successful. Along that last line, too, I think we've had this discussion at both the Amherst School Committee and also the region, our capital improvement plan. We continuously keep talking about the, you know, trouble that our parking lots are in, that our school, you know, infrastructure is in. We really need someone to take a hard look at what those budgets actually represent and engage them effectively, so that we have a clear and concise plan, not something, I think, that we can continuously, you know, put off, because every year frankly is a hard budget year. But we need to address these problems, and we need to address them very soon. So I'm hopeful that we can incorporate that into goals this year as well, even if we have to make room for some other things so that we can make that happen. So I think those are probably my three top goals at this point. But I do think that, you know, like I said, this school group task force will be sharing some other ideas, and I'll pass it on to you and to the committee as soon as they are available.
Great. Is there anything else from the committee? Okay. Do you have anything you want to ask of us before we move on?
I just want to thank you. That was incredibly helpful to, to hear where the people were coming from. So I'm glad we had this process and I didn't come up with something today because the next round would be much more informed with the comments that I heard from members. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Well, that's great. That's nice to hear. I don't know, more positive feedback, you know?
We'll take it when we can get it.
Are you done?
I think I'm going to leave you in the very capable hands of Ms. Cunningham, Mr. Mangano, Ms. Palmer for the rest of the, if that is okay with the committee. I think that's my capacity to do this.
Well, happy to leave them. And we're getting you out of here, by the way, a couple minutes, aren't we? Absolutely. Now, this is why we, this is why we created the extra minutes. Without objection, a five-minute recess. No objection, five minutes. Are we all here? Calling the meeting back to order. With the, I apologize to you, but with the committee's indulgence, just enough folks have been waiting, I'd love to flip the order of the next two items, E and F, and move the resolution on support of the education funding campaign up one item, if that's okay, with the committee has so therefore indulged. And do we have anyone else to speak on behalf of the item? Please, Miss Fay.
Hi, Jean Kay, president of the Amherst National Education Association. And usually we come once a year, twice a year, and we face the same budget crisis every year. And as you're all very well aware, the foundation budget review hasn't been done in 25 years. So if the recommendations of the 2015 Budget Review Commission are implemented, then Amherst, and this would be through the year 2023, Amherst would receive $264,950. The region would receive $358,000, and Pelham would receive $86,978. Now, I know what the schools can do with that kind of money. You know what the schools can do with that kind of money. What we'd like you to do is consider this resolution. I'm here at the regional committee meeting so that I can talk to all of the representatives from the towns to join the Amherst-Pelham Education Association, as well as the Mass Teachers Association, and a lot of coalitions around the state, and in forcing the legislators to fully fund public education so that our kids get the schools and the education that they deserve. It's way past time. And we're talking about this, this is 2015, so we're already behind another two years, and it's just going to be increasing, and the things are just going to be getting worse and worse. So for your consideration, I would hope that you would join us in asking the legislature by May 1st to pass a budget that is good for public education and provides the kids with the education that all of them deserve, not just students that live in wealthier, wealthier towns and communities.
Thank you. Are there, so by the way, the draft resolution is in your packets, and it could obviously be adapted readily to insert the name of the district and the amount and the closing, therefore be it resolved at the Amherst-Pelham Regional School Committee urges the legislature. Those would be easy edits to make. I guess for the purposes of the public, it says, "Resolution in support of funding for our public schools, whereas free public schools available to all students without exception are foundational to our democracy and are required by the state constitution." And, "Whereas all of our students, no matter where they live, deserve high-quality public schools that teach the whole child and provide them with rich school experience that addresses their academic, social, and emotional needs. Whereas the state's foundation budget formula, which determines state aid to each district, has been woefully outdated for years, therefore underfunding our districts by more than $1 billion a year for essential educational services." And, "Whereas an updated foundation budget formula would bring the Amherst-Pelham Regional School District up to $385,000 additional dollars and additional state aid each year, allowing this district to move closer to providing all students with the education to which they are entitled as residents of the Commonwealth." And, "Whereas the legislature failed to pass any foundation budget legislation in the last session, leaving districts' educators and students without the funds necessary to support the schools our students deserve in every district in the state, therefore be resolved that the Amherst-Pelham Regional School District urges the legislature to approve and fully fund a new foundation budget formula by May 1st, 2019." We could adopt this now, we could adopt this, consider adoption later. I'm open to the committee's decision on that, depending on how, I don't want to say controversial, but what your opinions would be.
What's to be gained by delay?
Nothing. I'm just, I'm saying you're the committee. I'm not an autocrat, right? It's like the entire point. I could say, do you want, everyone's, you know, who wants to vote yes, right? I'm not going to do that. Somebody can move it on the other hand if they want.
And I was just wondering what's to gain by delay?
Nothing.
Thank you.
Mr. Minina, I apologize. You asked a simple question, and you deserved a simple answer.
I move to approve the resolution as read by Mr. Nakajima, and with the edits that we would come, that we would put in afterwards to clarify which region and school committee is involved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Mizudonia, second by Mr. Demling. Are there further comments? Mr. Demling?
You know, we talked about this topic a lot, so we don't need to belabor all the details, but I would say for the public's edification, you know, they hear us talk about advocacy, you know, all the time, and there can be a little bit of advocacy fatigue, you know. We're always talking about underfunded, we're always talking about this and that. This is a particularly focused moment, I think, for state-level advocacy. Ms. Fay talked about working with other organizations. So the MTA is definitely making this a priority. Mass Ed Justice Alliance, which is a grassroots organization across the state that's been working with teachers and school committees and parents and concerned communities, is really activating on this at the same time. Mass Association of School Committees is trying to get in board. And by the way, we all should have gotten an email from MASC asking us about what their priority should be. This is certainly a good answer to give them. So it's an opportunity to come together, and, you know, like Ms. Fay talked about, about forcing the state, not in a rude way, but in a, this has been studied very comprehensively. We know what the underfunding is, and it's that classic rhetoric from the state rep, "Well, if you want me to pass something, then make me do it," right? It's that political pressure that we need to create. And it really is coming into a moment here, I think. And, you know, the last thing I'd say about it is that, you know, we know the money from these amounts that our district would receive, but I think it's really about towns and school committees across the state coming together. This is about everybody, right? There are towns that are much less fortunate than us in terms of resources, who are hurting far worse than we are because of this underfunding, you know. And so this is, it's not just the financially advantageous thing for us to do, it's the morally right thing to do, it's the ethically right thing to do, to make this a priority for the state, and to communicate out to the public that this is the year to find publications.
Is there any?
Just wanted to add a comment that I think our state representative currently in office has expressed support for this issue previously, but I think could probably be reminded that this is important and this is something for us to continue pounding on. And I think any new elected officials also should absolutely make this a priority, because I think in order for it to continue to command the kind of importance that it requires in Boston, that we really need to be able to push people to do that. So to Mr. Demling's point, and I think a lot of the work that we've done already on this committee to help advocate on behalf of these issues, we should continue doing that, but continue to bring in some of our statewide electeds to do that as well.
Yeah, that, and I think some of the other select boards, finance committees, and things like that. I mean, we're heading into another budget season for the regional committee, and I don't think I'm telling any secrets to say it's probably going to be another lousy season of arguments amongst the four towns. And if you really, some of those arguments are becoming really pointed around educational philosophy and how that affects our budget and support for our schools. But the reality is, if you pull back for a second, and then you look at the underfunding of Chapter 70, the underfunding of regional accounts, and the diversion of money for charter schools, you can actually see where the pressure's coming from, right? Between unfunded, then it's underfunded accounts, and then a philosophy of disjourning money from our school districts, I actually think, I actually think weirdly enough, this is a propitious moment to organize, because I think there's going to be a prairie fire rebellion in this state that matches like Prop 2 and 1/2 and Prop 13 soon, around the ways in which our municipal accounts or taxpayers in our schools are getting screwed right now. And, but the point is it won't happen by accident. It'll happen if we organize. So I think we should organize on this. I think we should organize on charter schools, and I think we should organize on our regional accounts, all three of them. We should do it vocally, and we should do it in organized fashion. Any other discussion on this, though? Seeing none, all those in favor? Cool, passes unanimously. We can grab this up and, thanks for bringing it. We can, like, do something pretty with this? Letterhead and signatures and stuff like that? Cool, yes.
Yeah, you know, I think in terms of visibility and getting the word out and getting it activated, we also send out to local residents.
Absolutely. We should, I mean, let's follow up on this later. We should get it out in general, as well as obviously CC electeds, but also local officials as well as state officials. Great. Yes, licensure update. Imagine what at one point this would have been, the talk of the town, the hit, the thing that would be up here with ice cream and, you know, popcorn.
Well, I have good news to share, and that is that all of our principals and assistant principals at the secondary level are fully licensed with their 912 assistant principal license. So David Slowen has his professional license, Mickey Gromacki has her professional license, Mark Jackson has his professional license, Talib Siddique, who's the assistant principal at the high school now, he has his initial license. Rebecca Sweetman and Joseph Smith, they have their initial license at the 5-8 level. So they're all licensed.
Great. Are there any follow-up questions, Ms. Minina?
Are there any unlicensed positions?
Unlicensed?
Oh, any positions held by unlicensed people?
At the regional level, I'm doing an audit right now. And so in my November presentation, I'll be better able to share that.
And that would include teaching positions and, so we've just done the administration.
Done the administration. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Seeing none, thank you very much. So the next item is food services update. I don't see any trays of food out there. This is not going to be a show, it's a tell. It's just going to be a tell.
I've been, I've been pestering him for financial details since like June, and he was like, "Can you wait?"
So I apologize, Mr. Kaczynski. They have put meat on the bones, more powerful than any tray of treats could ever be, as a true statement.
So has everyone met Sasha Palmer, our new food service director? Sasha Palmer, new food service director, doing great job so far. So the way we're going to organize this update is I'm going to go through the slides sort of briefly, I'll do each slide briefly, and then I'm going to talk with Sasha, she's going to talk about the program and what's coming up, if you're excited.
Is there a microphone? I should be talking?
Nope.
No.
Which actually just means because the microphone's way back there for purposes of that, or just like, at least this way.
Where's the cone?
The cone, exactly.
All right. So the first thing I wanted to do is thank everyone who helped make the food service program a success last year, you know, our kitchen staff, our sustainability coordinator, Jen Reese, school garden coordinators, maintenance staff, everybody basically who's involved in the program really came together last year to make the program do very well. Some background, just quickly, some context, we had Whitsons for about 10 years, and we had Chappell's before that, so we were outsourced, and this committee decided to bring the program back in-house. So last year was our first year having the program completely run by the district. So what does that mean? Basically, all of the functions of the management operation came in-house to our staff here. So menu planning, food purchasing, hiring and firing, dietetic work, state reports, compliance, all of that started, came to the district staff. So we were in charge of everything that we had done, you know, frankly, in quite a while. And so last year's program was really focused on trying to achieve or at least make progress on the goals that the community visioning group set, which was maybe two years prior. These were the 12, 11-ish goals that the committee had set, and so we intentionally made progress on each of these. So the first one, taste. So we focused on using higher quality ingredients, quite frankly. You'll see that in the cost, our food cost did go up, which was intentional. A lot of it was Project Bread, so we'll talk more about that graph in a little bit, but we were able to get Project Bread, which provided a guest chef in the schools, and he helped introduce several new menu items which were a little popular. And one of the things, just for example, that he did was he gathered feedback on some of those items and tried to get a sense of what are kids like it, you know, between schools, what are kids like it. So this is an example survey that they did, it was a hand survey that they then compiled into this graph, but essentially the green are the yums, the blue are the mint. I don't know how you say that, but.
Mint.
Okay, it's okay. Or that emoji movie was, right? And then the yell is where the, you know, thanks, they didn't like it. So you can see there's differences across the schools, and Crocker Farm really liked the green mustard pizza, which had vegetables that were grown in our school gardens in it. And whoever.
That's nice.
Yeah, you know, so, good. Other goals, so scratch cooking. So again, a lot of Chef Sam's new menu concepts were from scratch cooking items. You can see those over on the right. There's basically a list of all the new things that we introduced last year. The quality food, so we started purchasing our food through the collaborative for education, which is where most of the districts around here get their food. Then we started working with some more local vendors, for example, Arnold's Meats, that's where we serve our hamburgs, meat products from. And the good thing about a lot of our new menu options is that the model that Project Bread uses is that they come in, they taste test with kids first, they kind of build excitement, then they put on the menu. But more importantly, they're training the kitchen staff how to make the items, so that it's something that can be replicated in the future and not just like a one-time sort of, you know, thing to drop kids in for one time. So, that was good. There's picture Chef Sam, if you guys haven't met him yet. He was going to try to be here tonight with some of the Project Bread people, but it just sort of took out. That's our spicy flatbread something. Spicy chicken flatbread right there.
Catchy name, spicy flatbread something.
A popular item despite the fact it's mystery meat apparently.
But it was very successful. Other program area, so innovation. So we did a lot of new things this year. Created a new website, we were able to get the amherstfood.com, which is, nobody had it, you know, sounds great. Very easy to remember. More collaboration with the sustainability coordinator, Jen Reese, help bring school garden, what do you call it, the food from the school garden? It's the product or the?
Harvest.
The harvest. To bring the harvest into the.
Product widget. Oh, that's right.
We started using a new software called Mosaic, which is sort of the next most current software product for managing basically the backend of your food program. So you can put in all the inputs, you can give the nutritional values, the menus. We're still working on building it up, because it does take quite a bit of time, but it's something we're continuing this year. We added some staff to Pelham to help improve their process. We use the electronic notifications where we do balances, improved menus to know local and vegan options, which was one of the values that the community visioning group created. And then we also did something sort of new in the contractor staff, is we created incentives around participation. So if schools hit participation marks, or the district as a whole hit participation marks, they got bonuses. And so we were actually happy because we were able to give several amount this year because participation went up quite a bit. Plant to animal ratio, so we wanted to increase the plant to animal ratio. So three of the 10 new items that Chef Sam introduced were vegetarian items. And wait times, you know, some of that was difficult because it's a lot about the infrastructure that we have. So I think the best thing that we did last year to help with wait times is just keep a full workforce. That wasn't the case for many years under Whitsons, where we'd have open positions for quite a while. Some of that was given a better contract in place, I think to attract more staff, but we were able to keep a full complement of staff for most of the year last year. So lunch participation was another goal. So this is sort of a 10-year trajectory of the participation rates for lunch at each district. So Amherst is blue, so you can see Amherst is as high as it's been in the last 10, 11 years, but all three districts went up last year, and we hope to see that continue. This is just total lunch count, so it's not a percentage, but just total lunch counts. And so every single school went up last year in terms of the actual lunch count from the year before to last year, which is great and even better considering that our enrollment's generally going down at the school. So they serve more lunches with fewer kids, it's a good sign. Community engagement is another program goal. So we did a lot more catering last year than we had in the prior years. We tried to. we had in the prior years. We tried to connect with some of those really well-known events that have been in Amherst and work with them, partner with them. So the first day celebration was really the first time they had a real strong presence at it. Open houses, Martin for King breakfast, the ultimate tournament was a really big one, provided a lot of food for that. So there's a lot, these ones and a lot of the ones that we worked with, but catering went way up last year. Local and organic purchasing. So we added ten new local or regional vendors, and we started serving organic or organic items four to five times a week in some hour and a half a month. Nutrition education. So Chef Sam, who was in the chef in schools program, so part of it was just interacting with students in the cafeteria, when he was doing the taste test, find out what their likes and dislikes. Also the collaboration with our sustainability coordinator. See the last piece there? So the garden sort of tested, and the students basically helped harvest the produce that was going to be used in the cafeteria. The two menu items that used at Harvest was the school garden soup day and the Green Mashed So there are a couple other areas that I think were important to note from last year. So workforce development, we had about fifty percent of our staff turnover, which isn't totally unusual. But I think the staff we did hire have continued to make really strong contributions to the program. We increased the diversity of the workforce. So we went from about five percent staff of color to thirty-five percent. And for our cook positions, which was like the next, like the middle position, went from twenty percent to sixty percent. We had more professional development built in, again, as part of the contract that we negotiated. And we tried to make the PD accessible to everyone. We have a few staff that speak Spanish primarily. So we took advantage of our new software for an earpiece that basically someone can translate into the earpiece, or someone's speaking English, and they can make sure that the presentation's accessible kind of in real time. And the ongoing professional development that Chef Sam provided, basically he was in schools ten months a year, he'd take a school each month, and he would provide culinary training while he was doing new meals to each of the staff in the building. We've gotten a form of grants last year. So Project Bread was an in-kind grant that was valued at about twenty-six thousand dollars, which Chef Sam, I think, two days a week for the entire year. We have a few other little grants, the other big one Sasha will talk a little bit more about later is the USDA Farm to School Planning Grant. Sasha had to go to Detroit last year, obviously Detroit, to basically meet with all the other people that got the grant and talk about what that's gonna look like for this year. Our collection policy, which Eric mentioned earlier, we think it's going pretty well in terms of, it's definitely going well in terms of communication. We've had really positive feedback, and we've spoken with a lot more families than we have in the past, and I think it's working out well. In terms of the data, so this is our overdue balances sort of over at times when we check it. So basically when we go into a trip, we check it. You can't go back to a previous date, so you can only get it by the time that day. So we've got to do our job of sort of having regular check-ins that are, you know, equal intervals. But these are the different intervals that we've checked it over the past several years. So you can see it kind of bottomed out around January of two thousand and eighteen, and we've seen it start to come back up. So it's at about forty-eight thousand dollars as of when I did this. And when I checked it today, it was at about forty-six thousand dollars. So it's making progress to go back up. The big drop happened when we were sort of absent the collection policy at all. That's that time period, we see a drop from mid-thirties to like fifty. That was when we had a policy, there was sort of a drought, but then it sort of paused for a while, and there was sort of this, this nothing for a little bit. But we're seeing positive progress with that as well. Spanned summer program. So the the blue bar, the dark blue bar shows the lunches that we've served during the summer. And the light blue is the breakfast, and the yellow is snack. So you can see our lunches have grown significantly from the first year we did in two thousand and fifteen to last year. And last year, we also implemented snacks, so that's why that's there for the first time, and our breakfasts have gone way up. So we added a bunch of new sites. Fort River was new this year, we developed the LSC sports camps. Jones Library was new, and we expanded the high school, middle school. So that was really good. To the financials, Audrey, ask them about. So this slide, so the first slide, the first comparison there is meal sales. So the blue bars are meal sales last year, and the red bars are meal sales this year. So we want the red bar to be higher, and it is. But when we brought it in from sales, went up. The next one is our labor costs from FY seventeen, FY eighteen, we want that one to go down, and it did, which is great. One after that is food costs, those went up. And so we had a, we had a study done by Masbro, which is the Mass Association School Business Officials, they brought in a couple food service directors. And they said, really, the target that you want is fifty-fifty in terms of your labor and your food costs. And so we're making progress to get to that place. When we went FY seventeen, we were about thirty percent food and seventy percent labor. After last year, we're about sixty percent labor and forty percent food. So we're getting closer to that fifty-fifty mark of having, you know, spending equally on your food.
Where did they come up with such a guideline, fifty-fifty?
Well, if you're, if you're spending much more on labor than you're on your food, either your food quality is really low, or you're spending a lot on your labor. So they they want to see sort of an even balance of what you're spending on your food versus the staff that are preparing that food. I'll give you a report, that's what they recommend.
Well, I mean, the goal is quality of the service. Now, what if it just costs a lot of money for food?
Yeah, quality of service, but also quality of the food, right? So and the last bar here is the management fee, which went from sixty thousand dollars to zero, which is one of the financial benefits of bringing the program back in-house. So these are sort of the numbers. So in general, just the bottom line, we went from having a two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollar deficit in FY seventeen down to a hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit in FY eighteen. And what that allows us to do too is put away a little bit of extra money in the Food Service Revolving Fund to help replace some of the equipment that's getting really old, especially at the elementary level, there's some capital needs, there's some capital needs for equipment. They've done a lot of So reasons to stay excited for next year, USDA planning grant, breakfast in classroom, I don't spend too much time because Sasha's gonna talk about this, but really excited to have Sasha here. She brings a lot of experience from the business she's worked in before. The first day, she was spotting things that like, literally the first day at John Ryan Schools, and she was like, that fridge doesn't look like right. And she went in, she's like, it's not. She's got a real strong background in food safety in particular. So really excited to have Sasha.
All right, thanks for having me. I'm excited to be here. The USDA planning grant, we are in, I was excited to be in Detroit. I had a little bit of water and came out sick and just saying. But we are in the beginning stage of getting together a committee to implement that planning grant. We have three objectives that we're working with. We have food service portion where we concentrate on the menu and purchasing local, introducing diversity into our menus. We also have the curriculum development, making sure the educational portion of the grant where our curriculum development specialists would be integral in getting farm to, to school into classrooms and getting kids excited about where their food is coming from and how it is grown. We also have the farm portion where we, we liaise on with farmers and our local supporters, our local community, to make sure that we are using and utilizing the resources that we have in the community. I was excited to come into a community where there are so many farms. I started in the summer, and we had that farm to school showcase, and a number of farmers turned up and was excited to be a part of our initiative. So we are in the stages of gathering that team. We would like to have as many people as we can on that team who is dedicated to the cause, getting fresh local produce in schools. One thing that I heard when I just came in was, what are you doing about having healthy, fresh, clean food in our, in our unprocessed food? And being in this era where there is so much resources, we should strive to have most of those local produce into our school menus. Breakfast in the classroom. I am a champion of breakfast in the classroom. I have implemented it in other districts, and I've seen the benefits of breakfast in the classroom. One thing I was excited to hear, sitting in other committees, is starting school, the school time, starting school a little earlier, and that would mean that there, that would be a great opportunity to serve breakfast after the instructional period began. Right now it's before, and kids are not sure that they're there. They don't, they, they would not, and we shouldn't be asking our kids to give up breakfast or recess. So having it a model that, that is, is after the instructional day starts would be good. We could do breakfast in the classroom or a grab and go option. And that's what we are hoping to pilot in some of our schools in the region. We see opportunities in the middle school to pilot that grab and go option where students can grab that breakfast while to their class and sit and have it. So hopefully we can start that as we are working with Project Bread. They've done a lot of research in this. It's just getting it to or selling it to all the stakeholders who would be involved, getting teachers, principals, and get parents to buy and to know that there's a fresh healthy breakfast that they can send their kids to have it in their homes. The other, the, we, I'm, I'm excited to also work with the Summit Academy, and we are planning to open what is called a Summit Cafe before they were getting their meals. There are high school kids who are getting their meals from the, the elementary menu. So they didn't, they weren't given the opportunity to participate in the variety that the other high school kids do. So right now, we're opening, we're hoping to open that cafe in their newly created space during, maybe the last week of October. The students can participate. They'll be the ones to create the logo and name their cafe. They'll have choices. They'll have a number of specials per day. On Mondays, they may have taco night. On Tuesdays, they make your own salad day. So that's actually an opportunity for the Summit Academy. And this is, I, I, this is based on the students' feedback. I went there and I saw how excited they were to, to be involved in what they are eating and how they wanted to.
So that's what we're excited about. We made a lot of progress. Have an answer question?
Yeah, I'd love to open it up to the committee as well as our student member, if they have any interest, as a direct customer or something. I'm not trying to put pressure on them, I'm just saying, I think the committee either now or in the future will welcome hearing. Your thoughts? Mr. Renan?
I have three questions. What percentage of high school kids eat on campus or bring their own lunch?
What's the question? Eat on campus or bring their?
How many, do, less than half or more than half of high school students buy their lunch here?
Less than half, yeah. About at the high school level, it's like forty-two percent of students buy their lunch to the lunch program.
And I mentioned this at our earlier meeting, three dollars sounds like you'd get a garbage plate for, for lunch. I mean, three dollars. Have you been to a restaurant lately? Why, why is it three dollars? Why not five dollars?
So some of it's keeping it affordable for families. You know, since it is a public school setting, I think the more you go, the more it becomes inaccessible, or you might families might not be able to afford it. So again, our prices are comparable to all our surrounding neighbors. They're all in the three-dollar range, so.
Maybe that's why some students feel the meal is inedible. I'm sorry, it just seems, whatever.
That's okay. Do you have another question?
Well, I, no, just joking.
Okay, okay.
We'll have a fee discussion later.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I don't know who put this presentation together, but you did an amazing job. I loved the presentation. I thought it was very clear. You shared a lot of the most important salient information, I think, that we've been looking for over the past year, to understand the success of this program, or, you know, where the weaknesses were, or anything like that. I also, you know, so I have to say that it's, it's great to see the increase in, in the take-up of lunches. And I think, you know, hearing even from community members, the excitement about finding good food that their kids can actually purchase is huge, especially for this community, I think, that values, you know, quality organic food. You know, they really want it to, they want to see the difference in their, in their kids and see that excitement there. It's also great to see the grants that have come through. I think we've talked a lot on this committee and other, you know, settings about the importance of trying to get additional grants for, you know, for this service, because we recognize how expensive it is, and so it's wonderful to see that. One comment that I just wanted to make, I think we've done, again, you know, a great job in lifting up the participation rates. I do have to say that I think that we still have a long way to go in terms of promoting the, the school program, the, you know, the in-school program. I think that, you know, there's, there's things that we've seen done previously, like this movie bike, that have been really exciting and fun, and, you know, people get really, you know, are into it. I think Chef Sam is a great program. Kids are really into that as well. But I think that there's still a lot more that we could be doing. We've talked a lot about that, right, in going into, you know, having some of the numerous street fairs that we have here in Amherst and the surrounding towns, both during the summer and fall and spring, even in the winter. The farmer's market that's, you know, that takes place here, just being a presence on a regular basis is incredibly important for people to be reminded of this service and the fact that we've made a change, because not everyone may be aware of that. So learning about that will be really important. But then also just to help parents and caregivers understand why this is a more valuable option. Because, you know, at the end of the day, even three dollars a day, if you have multiple kids, ends up adding up. And so, you know, there has to be that shift in thinking that this is really important, and therefore, we're going to make that sacrifice. And that's indeed actually what it is. I think for a lot of families, even families who don't qualify for, for your reduced lunch, that they still, it's a sacrifice. You know, you're, you're making a decision to probably not pay for one thing if you're paying for this. And I know in our family, you know, we, we often have those conversations with our kids. We negotiate with them, like, well, we'll, you know, do school lunch for you today, and, you know, we'll take care of something else. And I think that the more that we can inspire families and caregivers to understand why this is good, and, you know, why this is important and worth doing, the more they would want to do it. And also because, not just because we want to get more money for the program, but also because there's a good shot that if this is a high-quality food program, that our, the students in this district are actually benefiting from that, right? That they're getting good, healthy meals, you know, prepared for them by people who know what they're doing in-house. And that was the whole point of this program to begin with, to make sure that they're getting the nutritional needs met, so that even if they're not outside of the home, that they're getting, you know, one or two good meals a day. So all of that said, you know, it's, there's a lot of value in promoting this program and making sure people understand why we were pushing this so hard. And hopefully, we'll continue to see those numbers increase.
I'd like to plug. Yeah, that's exactly right. And one of the things that we're looking at for next summer, and Project Bread has expressed a strong interest in helping us do it, is to have a booth at Taste at Amherst. I think it's over the summer, once school gets up, and they said that they would be more than happy to help with our staff to go there and introduce some of the menu items and see, you know, try to get the word out to people.
Sinsky?
So I just wanted to say thank you. I think when we moved to this, I certainly said this might cost us a little more this first year, right? There's a lot of learning curve. There was a lot to do. There's a lot of things we hadn't done in over a decade. And to see the numbers come out, that not only did we get the student participation up and we got healthy meals to kids, which were our main goals, we actually did it for less money, which I think is absolutely amazing and beat my expectations of where we would be on this program. So I think that's a, just a huge shout-out to everybody who was involved in that. And I saw, you know, on my Facebook feed this summer, lots of people taking pictures of the signs that said, free lunch, you know, under eighteen, come get free lunch, and, and people really reacting to that. So, you know, to your point about promoting it, that's something when you see, you know, a lot of people recognizing the school providing lunches all over the community and other communities, it, it just was like, that's, I'm, I'm so glad we did that.
Spitzer, Keston Sandoval.
Well, I'm also really excited about this change at the school. I'd love to thank you for coming. It was a great presentation. I have a couple questions, and I'm concerned about elementary schools in, in regional, because the presentation.
Yeah, we're not supposed to.
Yeah, the presentation had a lot of stuff about the, the elementary school. So I'll try to, I'll try to be precise when I'm asking something that goes outside of the region. Let me know. So I'm excited about the, the diversity of options. I guess I, I'm curious if there's a plan to try to increase some of the vegetarian options. As a vegetarian family, that's the one thing that often keeps me from, so I might get into, to eat around as many options. And then. And then I had a question about this, and it's great that we have a sustainability position. And I'm wondering how that intersects with things about, like, the waste that's produced when we eat our lunches in terms of, like, I don't know, if we're using plastic utensils or if we're using tray, you know? I'm just wondering if there's any movement on trying to reduce any of that waste. It sounds like the sustainability talk has gone so far about kind of like growing our own food and not so much about what we produce in consuming it. So I had a question about that. And then I just think it's great that we're trying to use the meals and trying to get more kids to eat because I mean, meals, it's a way we build community. I mean, I think coming around a table and sharing a meal is one really excellent way of getting to know people. So the more we can do that in our schools, I think that's really great. And then I just had one follow-up question when we saw the big spike in the number of meals provided over the summer. How much of that is, we're meeting the demand that was there and how much is the demand increasing? Because, I mean, to me, that's really good news that we're feeding more people, but it also causes me concern. Does this mean that we're, you know, we weren't meeting the demand? I mean, I guess I just am curious. Is it supply or is it demand or is it a little bit of both? And is there any way we, I'd be concerned that hunger is going up in our community and we should maybe be trying to do more to address it.
I think it's, I mean, I'll go over sort of, so I think it's mostly meeting the demand that was there. So a lot of the spike is because we had new program, or we, programs that existed before that weren't being provided the free lunches. We now provide free lunches for those programs. So I'm not sure what they did before that to get lunch, if there was bring your own lunch or if those individual programs did something. But most of that expansion was we searched for all the programs and had our kids and these were the one, we tried to hit all the big ones, not just the small ones, so. And then in terms of the waste part, I think it's mostly school-specific right now. I don't think, unless Jen wants to correct me. I think it's mostly, so some schools, groups of kids get really excited with doing certain things. We do compost at some of the schools. I don't think there's like a concerted effort, but it's something we can look into as we go forward.
I can add one thing, Sean.
Yeah, go ahead.
So right now, so I love that Sean called me the sustainability coordinator. And he said it three times, so I'm gonna maybe adopt that as one of my titles. I am, I'm the science and garden coordinator. But whenever something comes into the district that's sustainability-related, Mike's like, Jen loves that. And so I end up talking to a lot of folks about it. And we are working right now with a student and faculty member at UMass in the MS3 program, the Masters of Science in Sustainability Science, to do basically like a case study report on seeing like, what does it look like when districts attempt to go zero-waste? You know, what's the timeline? What are the challenges? What are the different stages along the way? And so that is, the proposal's written and that case study research is being done right now. So we're actively pursuing and actively interested in ways that the district can green its practices and kind of come more into alignment with a greener philosophy.
Can we flag that as something that when it's ready to be brought back to the committee, you guys bring it back to the committee and present and talk about it?
Yeah, absolutely.
Also, on the vegetarian.
We are, for most of the entrees that we do, we're always trying to find a vegetarian option. And once we are able to do that, we label those on our menu. As much as possible, we try to include a vegetarian option in all of our menus daily.
Yeah, so that, at the region level, that seems, it's more common than not at the entree. So I'm glad to see that at the region level.
Ms. Kassenski, Mr. Manino.
Yes, I just had a couple of quick questions, I mean, sorry, I had a quick response, partly to some of Mr. Manino's comments. One, I think, important thing to remember is that we're not trying to, we're not making a profit on this. So we can provide a really good meal, I think, affordably. When we have strong and creative leadership, working with a lot of invested stakeholders in the community, we can do a lot to provide quality and affordable food. So, I mean, from what I've heard, my, I know personally, my kids are a lot, really excited, a lot more excited about the school lunches this year. They've been real happy. So I think there's a lot to be really positive about. And I was gonna ask if there's time, the school committee members can come and try the school lunch sometime.
We do. We have, and what we're, we have a school lunch week that's coming up in October. That would be a good time to have the committee members come in and sit and eat. And once we roll out the breakfast in the classroom, we would also like some stakeholders to come and participate in that breakfast in the classroom. It's always good to show that you are eating or your parents and other stakeholders are participating. And I always encourage my teachers to purchase from the cafeteria and go.
Come on. Well, we sometimes do breakfast for dinner as a treat, so I say breakfast at the committee meeting. What we should be doing. Yeah, so the points I wanted to bring up, Ms. Kassenski actually, you brought up both of them. I think you kind of buried the lead in this presentation, a smaller deficit and increased participation.
It's not all about the numbers.
I know that, I know that. But, you know, there was a lot of thought and, and I think there was a lot of acceptance that, okay, we're gonna take a hit. And if that happens, that's okay because it's an investment. So it just, again, speaks to the leadership and all the hard work, I'm sure, of all the staff. So it's, it's great. Yeah, in terms of like communicating this to the community, man, the free summer lunches, that was the easiest thing to share in social media. You know, as soon as I like share that, it's ten people, like this, this, this. People are so excited about it because, you know, most people don't really know what the opportunity is. And they're like, are you serious? You could just show up and you don't have to show ID or prove anything? You just get a free lunch? And people feel so good about sharing that. So when I think about, you know, what are the things that people feel like such a sense of pride in? Because the town does invest a lot in the schools and so we want to show them, you know, that it's reflective of our community values. That's like really near the top of the list. So, you know, whatever touchpoints you have with people in central office that are working on communications, promotions, you know, it's gotta be right near the top. And, you know, similar thing for the locally sourced farmer's school. People are really excited about that. Obviously, if there's anything the committee can do to support, you know, possibly getting that six-figure grant, you know, please come and talk to us about that. And the breakfast in the classroom is another amazing thing that if I just mention the possibility that we're piloting it, you know, sparks three or four different conversations. And, you know, there's just a lot of community value and support of it. So I wasn't here when we had the initial vote to move the food services in-house, but I'm so glad that we did. And it's so great that we have such creative, engaged leadership in this kind of position. It's kind of an uncommon thing from districts I've spoken to to have it be such an elevated, important role and it's so great in our community. So thank you for all of your work.
So, oh, I'm gonna speak after you get a chance to speak.
All right. One of the main concerns I had was with the breakfast in the classroom program, actually, looking at, you are trying to roll it out in the Middleland High School as well, yes?
The Middleland High School, yes, at some point.
But so with that, there are just like a few obstacles I noticed. One of which is that in certain classrooms and subjects, food isn't allowed in the classroom for, you know, sanitary reasons or what have you. And so giving that option but not having it be an option to all because maybe their first class is like a science or an art class. Another thing is just that the food in the classroom in general is a thing that is up to the teacher's discretion. And so having this service, while it looks like a great idea and I'm in full support of it, I worry about that like relationship between food services and then the discretion of the teachers once the students get into the classroom with food.
So the, for the Middleland High School, the breakfast model that would best work, and that's something that we have to look into, is breakfast after the instructional period. Does it necessarily mean breakfast in the classroom? We have the grab and go and other models that we can do. But for, when we do, if we do have breakfast in the classroom, there are always, we have to work with facilities to make sure that it's sanitary. We have to make sure that waste is disposed of properly. So it's always something that we have to meet with all the stakeholders, the teachers, facilities, and students and make sure that we are all working together because we can see the benefits of having breakfast in the classroom. One thing that I notice and is prominent is, and teachers won't say that, and if you visit any schools with those kinds of model, is that when students come in and there's food available or breakfast available, it comes then, it gets the instructional day started, right? It also limits the number of time kids will leave the classroom and need to go visit the nurse or so on. So that's something that once we show them the research, show the teachers the research and have, put all the things in place through facilities, the staff, food service staff, and have a plan of how we'll do that, I think everyone will buy into it after they see the benefits of it.
So anything, I'd go back to something that's been said a couple of times. I think it's wonderful, first off, this is all wonderful. I should just, I hate the whole business of repeating what everyone else is saying. But this is an awesome presentation. The work has been really tremendous over the past year. It's obviously years getting off to a great start. This is everything we were looking for and the key thing is to keep at it. And so I think one thing that the committee is really excited about doing is, in our role, if there's anything we can be doing to help support the program. So I think, as we've said, there's a strong interest in breakfast after the bell or whatever in the classroom. Anything I think we could do to be supportive, including, I think, on a marginal level budgetarily, if that's needed, I don't know if it is needed. That's the kind of thing we want to, I think, know and have it come forward. I think if there's, I think, it's certainly true, if there's anything we can do for the grant, we should be supportive. But I also think finding creative ways to increase the visibility of the program, of the foods, of local farmers and producers who are engaging, who are able to do innovative things around composting and waste reduction. I think that whole picture holistically, including also, you talked about the diversity of the staff, professional development of the staff. You know, we tend to talk, I don't mean this in a funny way, but I mean, we tend to talk sometimes about staff as sort of like objects of discussion as opposed to people who are, in fact, leaders in their work. And I think it's a wonderful thing to do to get a chance to do that as well. Especially because I think the chef-stem work, which I've heard positive things about, only really succeeds if then the recipes are adopted and located and involved in the daily menu, right? And so I think finding a way for us to be engaged in celebrating that work and giving greater visibility to it would be a really neat thing. There's a lot of things that probably would involve us, but I'm just saying if there's anything we can do to be helpful in that, I think we would encourage it. And one of the things I'm excited about looking at in the coming years, where we can, first off, what you continue to hear from students, that's something incredibly important. And just knowing that there's a continual feedback mechanism of hearing from students about what they like, what they don't like, and what can be improved. Same thing from staff. But also looking at the diversity of menu items and sort of the richness in terms of vegetarian, local, but also just different cultures being touched on upon in terms of their food. It may sound dumb, but when I saw tofu stir-fry on there, I was like personally kind of excited to see tofu on, and it's more cultural than it is vegetarian for me. But it was neat. And it's like, so you look at it and you're like chicken biryani and, you know, teriyaki stir-fry with tofu and, you know, tacos al pastor.
We have a Jamaican jerk coming up.
Jamaican jerk coming up. I mean, but I think, but that's actually the kind of stuff I was interested in hearing. It's because to me, that's just, it's incredibly exciting. I'm hoping that as students are, I hope students like that. A lot of stuff.
And we are working with Chef Sam just to also do training for the cooks to make sure that these menus are, these items are, these recipes are included in the menu and it's done the right way. Because it doesn't make sense, we have this fancy recipe that's not getting the simple methods across and have it done properly.
I mean, this is something I already know, we've heard tonight, but I think I came on the committee when the working group that Mr. Mangano was working on was coming into a landing on some of its work and starting to present its initial results. This has to be one of the topics of greatest enthusiasm, greatest care, and greatest concern that I can even think of. And it's one that has also the capability of, unlike most of the other things we talk about, we care deeply about, of instead of being like joyless and sort of semi-negative, to actually being utterly joyful in what we're really doing and what the end result is for kids and for the staff and for our community. And so it's just, you know, we want you, I mean, we wanted this presentation in like March and we wanted it.
It's a wait.
We wanted it in July and we waited until September and we were excited. I mean, I'm saying this only because, I don't mean this in, I mean this in as affirmative and as affirming a way as I can, like we're all, like every day, we're right behind you. And we know so many members of the community are too. Mr. Manino.
I want to make clear my original comment, it's only to support you. You're doing a remarkable within the existing constraints. But why does it have to be a self-sustaining program? Why do we want to eliminate that deficit? We don't take low enrollment classes and say if they don't pay their way and don't offer low enrollment classes, why does lunch have to support itself? You can keep the three dollars, but increase the general funding. It's just a suggestion.
No, no, I, Ms. O.
I just wanna thank Mr. Mangano, Mr. Har, and I'm sorry, I don't remember your last name.
Palmer.
For the hard work you've done, especially on the summer programs where you've increased it to ten sites. And I just want to say, I think we missed an opportunity this summer to get the word out because when I saw the article about the baby burp truck serving teenagers, which was excellent, and it was moving around, I was yelling at the article, you know, having been part of the visioning group.
I did the same thing.
I was yelling, I was like, what about the schools? I know, it's like, we were serving ten, ten different locations and I think we missed that.
But we did work somewhat in partnership with UMass. There was communication between UMass and the school.
But I'm just talking about an article that we should have, next year.
So how do you?
Thank you.
How do you like the food?
Oh, it's super. And I believe that as the program can use the rollout, that as more middle schoolers are introduced to that food by the time they do get to the high school, they'll continue to eat the school food instead of bringing their lunches.
That's fascinating. Over the summer, when I was talking to Mr. Mangano and Mr. Har, one of, they were hypothesizing around these trends and they said, by the time you get to high school, I remember you guys said this, by the time you get, you're already in your junior or senior year, you're sort of locked into a pattern of how you're eating. And I remember you both said you were hoping, what did you say? So we hope you're all three right. Is there anything further? I mean, so we want to let you go and then move on with our agenda. We will do that. Thank you so much for coming. And as we said, on to more cheerful topics. FY18 fourth quarter budget update. That, that's, I'm teasing you slightly, Sean, but misleadingly in every category says, oh my goodness, spending so under budget and projection, isn't this amazing? Until you get to the end and it's like, oh yeah, that's right. And then there's a $48,000 overrun in healthcare and benefits. Yeah, yeah, that's right. Everything adds up to zero. I'm sorry. I gave away the headline, I'm sorry, Sean.
Spoiler alert now.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna leave, so. So the budget actually ended pretty well considering what we dealt with last year, despite the large increase in health insurance. Really, the thing that saved us is the addition of tuitions and the students, you know, fewer students going out and some students coming back really saved the region last year. Given the hour, I probably won't spend, I won't read it unless somebody wants me to. I'm gonna focus mainly on the pictures and the charts and the graphs because those, I think, are in front of.
That's what my mind can handle it.
Yeah, so I will read the headline. So at the close of the first year, FY18, the Amherst County Regional Scholarship Budget ended 2.16% under budget due to savings in payroll and tuition. So that's sort of the main takeaway. Move to the second page. So one area that we just, we need to keep some closer tabs on, I think, moving forward is our substitute costs. And so those have generally been growing over the past few years. It's also one of those things that is sort of impacted by minimum wage increases going up because we try to keep our sub grades at least equal to minimum wage and not higher. So during the budget season, it's something we may see an adjustment being made to reflect our actual costs. It's not really discretionary, it's as needed for subs. On the next page, you'll also see another sort of negative trend is our contracted special transportation costs. So those have grown from about $50,000 FY12 to about $270,000 FY18. You may remember signing up, voting a three-year contract with Amherst Pool, which is designed- You may remember signing up, uh, voting a three-year contract with Vanpool, which is designed to help get those costs down a little bit, and it will. But we are having more kids out of district that require transportation and some of them are just going farther away, so the transportation costs are increasing. So that's another trend that we're gonna take track of as we go forward. One of the unfortunate things is we don't get circuit breaker reimbursement for special ed transportation, which is a huge cost and special ed program for a student, but we don't get any reimbursement for it. Regional transportation reimbursement and circuit breaker reimbursement for those costs. The good news is the chart right below it, so it's sort of broken into three phases here. So the first one is vocational tuition out of districts. So the first bar is what we have for FY seventeen actual students going out of the district. And the next is what we budgeted for FY eighteen based on that actual, and then the third is what we actually had in FY eighteen. So you can see our vocational enrollment went down quite a bit from what we had in FY seventeen and that we budgeted for FY eighteen. Same thing for charter. You can see our actual charter enrollment went down from FY seventeen actual and it reversed a trend of many years going up like ten to twelve kids at, at a time. And our FY seventeen choice out of district went down as well. So across the board, all sort of the non-special ed, out of district tuition programs, we saw students, uh, subtle levels stay flat or go down. Uh, the next chart just shows you the actual numbers behind those. Um, I won't hop on the lunch participation one, because we just had a little presentation on lunch participation. And then the last thing, so our revenues, our revenues came in a little bit under budget, meaning we thought we were gonna get more revenue. The main reason that they came in under though was due to the charter tuition coming in under. So our charter tuition revenues are based on our out of district charter costs and out of district charter comes in, well, below budget than our revenues come in less too. So it's, it's a revenue deficit, but it's sort of a good one because our expenses came in so much lower. So the net basically of, uh, the revenues and expenses and what we are sort of, uh, putting back into E and D at the end of the year is $569,620. And what we voted to use from E and D to support the FY nineteen budget is $500,000. So sort of the measure of are we in an open place is are we putting more back in than what we're using to support the next year's budget? In this case, we're putting $69,000 more back in. So that's sort of the, the highlights of the FY eighteen Q four budget update. Happy to answer any questions or revisit any topics on that, maybe skipped over.
Mr. Kamal?
Uh, first of all, excellent job of setting all your Y axes to, to zero.
I still remember that from time meeting, good.
So one, one short question, then we may be one more general one. Maybe I'm just not reading it right, and I probably should given the number of presentations you've done on this, but, so the 569 left over at the end, how does that relate to the first number of 940, of 950 essentially? I'm basically trying to understand.
Yeah, how they all connect.
Well, big picture, like, oh, what did we save? And then of what we saved, where is it going?
So if you go to the first page of 949, we don't really, um, so that's after you take out 280. If you look right above that number, you see the 280. So that 280 is, um, a contingency basically of the school twenty votes every year. We never touch it, so it comes out of E and D. We have it in the budget just in case there's an emergency and then we don't use it and it goes back into E and D. So ignore that number and look at the one right above it, which is the 669. That's really what we came in under budget from operations for the year. And so we came in under budget by 669, but our revenues were short by a hundred and a hundred thousand. So the, the sum of those two numbers is the 569 and what goes back into E and D.
Do we ever use the, that emergency? How often is that, is that occurring? We don't use the emergency?
We haven't used it since I've been here. And the main reason we don't use this is because if you use it, then it's basically taken directly from E and D because we're not putting it back in at the end of the year. But it's, we haven't used, we almost used it when we had the gym issue, the flood, but we were able to figure it out during the year without tapping into that, so. But basically, it's just 280 coming straight out of E and D that if we didn't have it there and there was an emergency, we have to revisit the whole budget essentially and have it re-voted and stuff.
Can I follow something on that? Is that since you said we voted to take $500,000 out of E and D for this fiscal year to use? And we ended up putting in five, we're gonna make horse, so putting in 569 in the E and D, which means there's a net plus of 69. What that essentially means is the savings, um, that were sort of enforced last year because we knew we were in bad times have managed to catch us up to the point that some of the more challenging things we had to do for this year, like taking a half million out of E and D, were, were essentially able to net out and make, make ourselves whole for that decision.
At least for FY eighteen.
Well, I don't mean forever.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, um, I mean, the main reason we were able to come out through the booth for FY eighteen is because we did restrict the budget about halfway through the year because we didn't know where the health insurance premiums were gonna end up. So the tuitions were restricted budget, um, we have some staff turnover savings, ended up putting us in a good place. We wanted to come in, but at least what we were using for FY nineteen. So I think the answer to what you're saying is yes.
Well, the reason I'm saying that just is because a, a reasonable person could sit back and say, last year we ended up having to make a lot of emergency decisions to cut back spending that was unpalatable and undesirable. We also had to make cuts for this coming fiscal year. You said, then see a half million dollars sitting around and a reasonable person could say, wouldn't it be great to have spent it? And you could make that case, perfectly fine to make that case. But an alternative case to be made would be that, um, since we don't know what could possibly pop up this year that would put our budget at risk, we've at least put ourselves on a better or more even keel.
Yeah, absolutely. And again, so.
For immediate future challenges.
Yeah, absolutely. And if we, and if we did spend it and we still took the $500,000 out of the FY nineteen budget, then our, our E and D fund just goes down by $500,000 and that's essentially half of our E and D fund. And so the, what we pull out of E and D every year is not necessarily a recurring revenue, right? It's basically if we had my leftovers here before, um, is what we're applying to the next year's budget. So that's why we're always careful now, whether we vote for FY nineteen for the following year, if we wanna put back a bit of this year, because if not, we're basically just spending our reserves.
If you're able to.
Yeah.
But if it hadn't been there, then we wouldn't have been able to. We just, I mean, we knew when we were taking the vote this past spring that if, if it was a lousy enough budget to have to vote, that if we were having to cut the margins of E and D a little bit, we were just doing that. I mean, I'm not saying it wouldn't have put anything back, but it, instead of being 569, it could have been 369.
Yeah, to some extent, but also when we, um, present the budget, you know, we have to make an assumption over what E and D number will be used to beat the budget and essentially that could lead to more cuts or less cuts. So when we set that number, we look at what we think we're gonna end up at at the end of the year. So the $500,000 is sort of the ballpark that we thought we might end up at, um, although there was a lot of uncertainty last year with the health insurance.
We talked about, I mean, sorry to belabor this, I apologize. There's no microphone. I'm grabbing the microphone. But I mean, but I mean, we literally talked about this at the end of the budget type. Like, well, what's the level of uncertainty in the numbers coming in worse than they were? And what you're reporting is that they came in fine relative to those expectations. Sorry to belabor it, but since we all went through hell basically last year with the budget, it's not an important topic. Anyone else? Sean?
So any early signs that health insurance is gonna blow everything up again?
So we're in the Maya Trust now, so the good news is that, um, we know our rates for this year, they're not gonna change. Unless there's something that happens, that's never happened in Maya's history, uh, which is their rates changing during the year. So for this year, we're set. For next year, um, we know our increase is gonna be no worse than the average increase in Maya. So when they do the increases, they, they have a low, a medium and a high basically, and they band communities together based on their experience. And so we're gonna be no worse than the average. This is one of the promises they made to the, the group when we signed up with Maya. So past history, that's like around four, five percent potentially, which is much better than what we had prior year. So really good to know around health insurance this year is enrollment. And we'll get firm numbers on that next month. October's when all the new hired, new employees go on and the retirees go off. So I'll have a update for the first quarter budget. But we have seen, uh, which is sort of good and bad, we've seen a, a pretty large increase in opt-outs, which, you know, it's unfortunate that people are choosing to go to other insurance because it's either better or the cost was too high here, but financially for the district, every time there's an opt-out, we save about, depending if it's a family plan, our single plan somewhere between like three to four thousand to as much as 13,000, um, per opt-out. So we saw, we've seen the opt-out numbers go up.
Anything else?
A wonderful question. So, um, because we put a freeze on, um, expenses last year to try to mitigate some of our issues, what was the impact of that? And our, our budget this year is even tighter, so if we put off buying things that we really needed, it's not really in the budget this year. How is that kind of lining up for things that our school is needing?
There was a lot of early spending, I think is a result of that. I think as soon as the budget turned over, they were like, let's get our purchases in before something happens. So, um, I think the major impact is that we're gonna see a lot more earlier spending this year as a result of, to make up for a little bit of the last six months when things were restricted. And it wasn't that there was no spending, but.
Critical things for purchase, but a lot of the nice to haves are things that could be put off or put on.
Uh, I just had a follow-up question on this. Um, you mentioned the substitute costs were one area of concern. Um, so I'm sure part of it is, um, the total, the wages going up and other pieces, um, approved leaves of absences. So I guess I'm just curious, like, is that anything that we have control over or the district has control over? Or is that something that, I, I guess just if we were to address this, what would be your recommendations or what should we know about the, the, the people and the factors behind these changes?
Yeah, most of these costs, we sort of have two sub-buckets. This sub-bucket is, um, sick, personal time primarily. Um, so that in terms of approved, it's really things that are not up for approval essentially. It's, um, we, some, there's a lot of spikes here and there because if there's a, a lot of long-term leaves that year due to medical reasons, then the sub-costs are higher that year. Um, we have a separate bucket, which is a much smaller bucket for like professional development leaves, subs for those professional development leaves. That we have more control over, really to the budget piece of how much we wanna set that at. Um, but this bucket, which we see in the trend, is more, just more sickness in general or, um, more long-term leaves, um, due to medical things during the year. Except but, right, um, more wellness programs and some of the medical is.
Eat the healthy lunch.
Eat the healthy lunch.
I was just on that comment, because I think it is kind of interesting, uh, wellness programs. And I think, you know, that there was definitely research coming back about the investment that is made by employers around the country in all sorts of different sectors to help employees feel better, you know, and, and just get over illness more quickly, take better care of themselves, all those kinds of things, which of course benefits their morale and benefits their health, which is a, a plus for everybody, including the students. And then also has the added benefit of, you know, our bottom line. So maybe something to think about and, you know, and just explore in the year coming up. Because I, I do remember during the union negotiations, us talking a little bit about some of the substitutes, uh, you know, sort of costs related to this. And, you know, I, to me, this doesn't, it doesn't feel alarming. It's not like we're seeing this gigantic spike, but we're definitely seeing a trend, you know, that seems to be moving up. So maybe there's something there that we can dress to help our employees feel better and, you know, cut some of these costs.
And, and Maya, um, in the presentations I've been at, Maya has a pretty good wellness program. I'm getting a survey right now that I like fill out twice a month. I get like $200 gift cards, like a healthy survey, like you know, like illness is bad for your health or something. Um, so they have a lot of little things like that and just kind of sort of that healthy buying, um, uh, so, so they have a pretty good wellness program. So I think they know that they, they, for them, it saves them money too, right? For the members, I can say, and using the health insurance, that saves them a lot of money. So, um, so I think that's something to look into more and how to communicate the wellness program to employees.
Well, just to follow up, I, I think, you know, uh, in California where I lived for a while, you know, Kaiser Permanente has this enormous program with all of their staff, uh, but also their members. And, and, you know, the, the focus really is on reducing costs and improving, you know, people's overall health. Um, and so there's, you know, a lot of really great models to, to, you know, whether it's Maya or others that we could potentially be using to help us do that.
Anything else? Thank you. And I think we've lost our computer AV capabilities.
I don't know if you, you don't need it, right?
I, I don't need it from this one.
Okay, that's all right.
All right. Thank you very much. Charter school expansion request discussion, it seems perennial, like whack-a-mole. But, uh, we're at it again, so it means we gotta get active again. Sean?
Yes, so the broker record item that, that never, never ends. So, uh, as you all know, once again, the charter school in Hadley is proposing to expand. And the same process as last year, if you weren't here, um, last year for it, basically the commissioner accepts input up to a certain date. The published date is gonna be, the deadline is now earlier than November first. We, we, superintendent mentioned a couple of days ago that he expects that date to hold. So it should be November first, where the committee can send letters, the public can send emails to charterschools@doe.mass.edu, which is available, um, places. Commissioner makes a decision. If it's approved, uh, it goes to the board for a final vote. If it's approved, then we would want to, uh, ask the board to overturn that, that ruling, which has happened in the past. Uh, and if it's, if the commissioner does not approve, uh, the school is very likely to appeal, which it has done the last couple of years. And then we go to the board and make the case again. So, um, I, I think our path, our standard path is pretty straightforward in terms of, we should write the same, a letter last year, which I think should be fairly similar to last year. It's essentially updating the data because the arguments haven't really changed because the proposal hasn't really changed. Except to say that, and, you know, we all got this very long document of the proposal to say that the way that it's characterized this year is, is particularly, um, I, I don't know what the word is for it, so I'll just read a couple of sentences off the, uh, the first page here. It says, "The PVCICS Board of Trustees wishes to make this change, the expansion, to satisfy unmet demand for kindergarten seats, expand opportunity and choice for urban, suburban and rural, rural students to attend desegregated, integrated public schools and increase the integration of staffing and public education. PVCICS has proven to be an engine of integration in Hampshire County." So, you know, when I read that, I was like, oh, well, I should go and look at the updated data because there, uh, there's been this constant accusation against our board and other boards that we are producing an opposition mythology, that we are somehow misconstruing what is, what is, what the data is. So, um, the Department of Ed has their own, uh, enrollment numbers for, for all sorts of different groups and it looks at all the high need achievement gap subgroups of low income, Hispanic, et cetera. And so when you look at all of these groups and you compare the school's enrollment to the, uh, region of towns that it serves, they are woefully under-enrolled in, in nearly every one of these categories. You know, just one example, the, their surface region is 35% Hispanic, they're 5.5%. They, uh, surface region is 20% special ed, uh, they're at 5.9%. In fact, if you, if you look at all 197 individual schools in the 31 towns, they're 196th in percent of special ed students. It just, it's, it's, uh, you can't, um, state the point for, same thing with low income, high needs, um, ELL. So, um, so why do I bring that up? I, I bring that up because, um, to sort of related to one of our earlier agenda items that, um, our, uh, the MTA president was, was bringing up. You know, this, this is, this is an attack on public schools. It's, it's, it's completely erroneous, juxtaposed with the data the Department of Ed, um, provides. And it's something that's worth, uh, I think pushing strongly against, um, back. And, and in the, in this year in which a lot of different towns are gonna be coming together to advocate for state funding of education, certainly the charter drain is a big part of that. And so, um, I've, I've already heard from other towns and we've seen some things in the, in the media of people pretty angry at not just the repeated request, but the, the nature of the accusation. And so, yes, we should do our letter, um, but I think we should sort of keep our eyes out this month because it's gonna be a fairly contracted time period and it's 11:01 is the deadline, uh, for opportunities to, to stand together with other schools and, and the MTA and, and other groups that are advocating on this issue. So, um, I, I think our next step is probably to draft a letter and, uh, at our October meeting, uh, review it.
Vote on it too.
Yeah, vote on it.
That'll be our only opportunity. So we have to review and vote. So we'll have to get the draft in advance of it. I think the other thing is because this is a regional committee meeting, there are representatives here of all the individual elementary committees and town committees. And I think what we, what we'd love to see is for you to go back to your regular town committee. And if you weren't, or maybe you were to be doing this, and if you are, then this meeting would be, people will be saying, that's awesome. They're so happy to know that. Uh, and if you haven't gotten around to it yet, knowing this, um, November first deadline, then syncing up your calendar to try to take a look at providing a letter of your own on the subject would be really, really critical because the, the classic mistake here could be, it turns out your committee meeting just happens to meet at a time that makes it inconvenient to draft and approve a letter. And so now's, now's the time to look. And then I think beyond that, one of the things that we'd love to see is if, if, um, we can reach out to our local school committees and finance committees as well to possibly also provide some formal support from each of our towns. I think beyond that, um, by the way, I apologize, we talked about this on Tuesday at our Amherst School Committee Meeting. So if it sounds like what I'm saying sounds even more declarative, it's because we were part of a longer other discussion and I forgive the regional members for the fact that I'm doing that. But, um, one of, the other thing too is the extent that, I think if we take accountability for our own local committees, select boards and finance committees, for our own local committees, select boards, and finance committees, that's extremely helpful. And then I assume, I assume Mr. Demling and Zidonia is going to keep at outreach to other committees in the area? And if you need any help.
I'm still four thumbs up.
No, 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 if you need any help, well, I can help, we can help. But I'm assuming you were doing that before, so I'm continuing to do that. Anyways, so that's where we're at on that. It is, and actually, it's funny because we were talking about this on Tuesday, and this approval will come after the gubernatorial reelection, which, to be blunt, I think the point of the board turning over is a good one. That was made by Mr. Demling in a previous meeting. But I think the fact that this is coming after the gubernatorial election makes it even more pointed because I could, you could imagine putting a lens on decision-making around public and community opinion that could be potentially different after November 6th than it is before November 6th. I don't know if that's true or not, but I don't want to, I don't want to take that chance at all. So, cool, anything else on this?
Just one note, I don't know if it's valuable to add to your letter, but I thought that the other noted difference when I read their application was that this time, not only are they maybe asking for approval to expand, but that, well, if not, you need to give us a number of students for which you are willing to let us expand to, which I don't think is the job of that board. And so you might, that would just be another.
The other thing that makes crafting the tone somewhat challenging, and I remember Mr. Nakajima bringing up this point, is that, you know, part of it is kind of reminding the board of Ed what they've said in the past. And so it's, and in one sense, it seems a little bit brow-beating to do that. On the other sense, you know, they have, Commissioner of Ed has a billion things he's paying attention to. He's like, what is, you know, charter schools? And so he's relying on the charter school office that relies on there. And so we sort of have to say, well, we've been paying attention to the history. Copy, paste, copy, paste, here's what you've told them to do the last two years. You told them to go away for two to three years, and they haven't.
I mean, tonally, the funny part is tonally is just, I don't know if I better phrase it. It's just not being snarky about it. It's sort of just being like matter of fact. Like, we've been reviewing your responses and we noted, because we did the same, anyways, whatever. Good, okay, we have our to-do list. Accept the gifts. I think we have gifts.
We have gifts, many gifts.
This is going to be a chore. Volunteers?
Happy chore.
Of course it's a happy chore, so goodness.
So I move to accept the gifts of the Amherst County Regional School Committee as follows. Valley Gift Community Foundation of Western Massachusetts, check number 2278524 to support the athletic program in the total of $2,456.31. Check from Margaret Lefter and Margot Mace, check number 11664 in memory of Philip Mitchell Ted Madden Scholarship, in the amount of $20. Donor Pamela Moser, check number 2193 in memory of Philip Mitchell Ted Madden Scholarship, $25. Donor Terry Ray and Margot Mace, number 13557 in memory of Philip Mitchell Ted Madden Scholarship in the amount of $100. Donor Thomas Lefler Jr., check number 1800 in memory of Philip Mitchell Ted Madden Scholarship in the amount of $50. Donor Class of 2018, check number 6409 to support the Class of 2018 for Class of 2019 Scholarship in the amount of $500. Donor James Marjorie Michael Christopher Abel to support lacrosse fees for in-need students in memory of Judy Brooks in the amount of $250. Donor Drawer Shirley Schmerling, and the check number is 3285 to support the Ames Program in the amount of $500. Donor Patricia Bodie and Mark Moriarty, and the check is 77929 in memory of Ryan at Amherst Regional High School Art and Library Split, $3,000 each in a total amount of $6,000. Donor Amherst Education Foundation, check number 1529 to support the Amherst Regional High School Light Board Performing Arts in the amount of $3,347.50. Donor Amherst Education Foundation, check number 1529 to support the Amherst Regional High School Restorative Justice Team to improve relationships in the amount of $5,000. Donor Amherst Education Foundation, check number 1529 to support coding robotics course for all eighth grade students in the amount of $4,000. Donor Society for Science and the Public, check number 110559 to support 2018 Regeneron Science Award OMAX microscope purchase in the amount of $2,000. And donor of the William Penn Foundation, check number 45141 to support girls' ultimate team donation, May 30th, 2018, $250, two-to-one matching gift in the total amount of $500 for a total of $24,748.81.
Is there a second?
A second.
Who can second it? Well, she did all the work, you know, we can do a second of it.
They were odd.
Is there, is there any discussion? I mean, this is obviously amazing.
Well spoken, Mr. Demling.
I meant the gifts, but she was great, too. Anyway, sorry, anything else? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion is red, so raise your hand and say a aye. Carries unanimously. Thank you very much. That really is remarkable, though, remarkably. I don't remember a list this long last year, so this is really something else. The last item we have is school committee planning upcoming topics. And unfortunately, I don't think we have the list of upcoming topics that.
Can we just take an action to email out the list to the regional group so then we can?
Yeah, why don't we do that, and then why don't you, why don't you? I was kind of, I was getting, I was reading the room, that people would like to get that email to them, and then they would like to, if they wanted to add something, and then they would like to go home. I mean, I'm not trying to stop anyone, if anyone, yes, Mr. Demling?
Yeah, just to add the charter letter and if the committee would like a recreational pot, perhaps?
Yeah, okay. Okay, great. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Call it.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor? It carries unanimously. We are adjourned and.
Thank you.